How we got the planning board meeting on the 25th? Uh, let's see, we have um meeting minutes.
Yes, so we have two sets of meeting minutes, one was the special meeting and the other was the meeting from the last regular meeting.
Any revisions to those, any kind of changes? Any commotion? Doug's got that.
Second.
Matthew's second. They've all given her approved, five of them, okay. Uh, work sessions.
Yes, but work sessions were um FedEx service station, I brought a phone tower and a new hall.
And you said which were coming up or not?
Do we have anything scheduled?
Yeah.
Next workshop, not yet.
Alright, with that then uh we'll get started here, first up is uh JMG.
Evening, my name is Dan Barnaby, I represent JMG Incorporated and JMG Custom Homes. Uh, we're requesting your board's consideration for a positive recommendation for the use of your cluster regulations. That would be a recommendation to your town board, which I believe has the authority to create use of cluster regulations. Uh, prepared to show you a couple of layouts tonight, that would be a precursor to the process. One would be a plan showing what your current zoning allows without the use of cluster regulations. And one which shows uh at the moment the desired uh use of the property, which we're requesting would take advantage of your cluster regulations. So the uh uh more in compliance with your zoning ordinance as it's written. Uh, the zoning is business transitional or neighborhood business transitional?
Business transitional.
Business transitional. And um the the way that your ordinance reads, um it's it's unique. I don't know if it was intentional or not, so we're trying to deal with a a unique element to your regs where they emphasize, the regs emphasize that we're dwelling as in meaning one building, one property as opposed to multiple. And with that in mind, uh your zoning ordinance allows the use of multifamily. And we're showing you a sample layout of a thirty-two unit multifamily complex, uh which uh from what I understand would work within your current zoning uh ordinance. My client uh uh has not been in the business of constructing multifamily housing. Uh, you would consider doing that, there would be other users that would consider building multifamily housing. But my client uh has uh more often built attached homes. We're gonna show you a townhouse plan, which is not too dissimilar to property that's located to the south of this project. Uh, I believe you refer to that as Laurel Laurel Park, is that is that the name of that project? Uh, or would you go further down Skyler Road? There's a, there's a quite a few units already constructed to the south, there's an entrance off of uh Skyler that's not shown on this plan. But I believe there's probably at a minimum about thirty residential units in there. And I don't recall if they're attached or not attached. Perhaps Alanie could switch over to the townhouse layout. This is uh what I would consider the uh maximum density that a townhouse project would allow. Um, there's uh uh some triple and some double units. JMG uh Inc. is not hasn't determined what the final density or layout would uh look like if if clustering would be allowed. But this is about the maximum, so you'd see no more than fifteen units. So you're reducing the density by seventeen units at least. And I'm not sure that more than thirty-two uh uh units could have been accomplished if if the building design were fully uh for the apartments were fully fully explored. But this is uh the preferred layout at the moment, and it's showing fifteen. And whether uh he commits to some of the triples or he falls back to just doubles or eliminate some of the interior units, he hasn't designed, he hasn't decided yet. Our clients hasn't decided yet, so you're probably talking somewhere in the twelve to fifteen unit range. This this use is more in keeping with what uh his current business model is, what JMG Incorporated has built over the uh in the past. I also believe, and my client believes, it would be preferred to the existing residents. They'd rather see this type of housing uh to their north between their houses and Collumor Road as opposed to uh apartment complexes. If if I believe, I believe the process would be that if you were inclined to give a positive recommendation, I would make an appearance to your town board, ask them for a positive recommendation. I'd go back, come back to this board, now with the opportunity to request that a cluster plan is adopted. And you would see, the next plan you would see is a more formal site plan. Uh, specifically identifying what relief we need from your zoning regs. That relief could be uh front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks. And in this particular case, uh multiple buildings as opposed to just one building on a property. Uh, it would be a subdivision, not a site plan. And with that in mind, each individual property would be subdivided building lot. And you could argue that if the building lots are subdivided, you still meet the requirement of the zoning ordinance even without clustering because you have one dwelling or one building on each now subdivided building. There is an existing uh hundred-foot train easement or buffer that was put in place from the previous housing. Uh, I believe that the original intention of that was to provide a greater buffer if there was a more more likely commercial use of the property. So we're requesting that for the sake of giving some uh more utility to people's backyards, that that uh easement or buffer be reduced from a hundred feet to fifty feet. We have not explored the possibility of a road connection to Collumor Road. Believe it's a state road, but I can't tell you for sure if it's a state or county road. And we're trying to present a plan that works independent of another road. Uh, the road design would allow for a turnaround for a town vehicle, showing the design of a public road. An alternative would be a private road, but uh I'm under the impression that a public road would probably be preferred. And we will inquire about a road cut for the sake of making it in and out easier, but uh we can't guarantee that the road cut will be. That's all I have, we can answer your questions.
I think if we get into clustering concept again, this is where it falls in perception. Clustering leads to us to town from the state's, the state's perspective. The answer to my question right off the top of the immediately, this is when it'd be a I looked at the road and talked with the Rocco of the town about hammerheads, what hammerheads allow. It was a town road and what about utilities, we're subdividing this a lot, I have to give ideas. If they're now into big lots in a business, in a in a business transitional district, then then it's a whole bunch of lots in a business transitional district under side yard setback requirements, I mean you go lots because now we're looking at at zero lot line development here as this moves forward, so I gotta think about, I gotta understand that one and think back.
So those are the type of things we would ask the relief on, so side yard setbacks, uh so to allow a zero lot line. And um if if you you could include in the approval, the relief that there's more than one building on the site if you're if you're struggling with how many buildings are on the property.
I I am just broad brush, I I'm struggling a little and only because I've just seen this actually for the first time. The cons, the visual concept of primary road and then another road, then all the buildings pushed to one side. When I when I envision clustering, I I see clusters. I see clusters so that that the rest of the land form goes to the benefit of the town and the neighborhood. So instead of pushing everything to one side, there's some sense of community uh engagement with the land, and I I don't know what that means yet. I'm speaking off the cuff and just reacting to to the layout with the hammerhead at the end right now. I don't know if the town, if Rocco accepts those, that's a question mark. Only because it came up once before and something else to me that it didn't go through that way. So it's just things that I'm spotting right now.
Uh, in addition to representing JMG Incorporated, I'm also a building and developer myself, my company is Eldon Homes. I've used clustering in Radisson, the town of Lysander, and I've used it on multiple occasions in the town of Clay. And I think that uh the first instinct is to suggest that uh there's something that you're protecting or a sense of community, but the best use for the developer is just a design tool to accomplish what you might not otherwise be able to accomplish. We we know we can accomplish a multifamily structure in here, we're trying to put in something that's more desirable. And although the the road is not two-sided, the further we can keep the new homes from the busier road, the more valuable they would find it, and then could be even more of a buffer to the busier road from the existing homeowners. Now whether that's ultimately planted or a berm is put there or landscaping structure, uh we haven't gotten to that part, that step yet. But I can see that there is a sense of community which is hard to accomplish in such a small neighborhood. You know, if we can take eight acres and create a small sense of community where before you might just have one building, uh that's a that's a win, I think, uh and what some would consider perhaps infill.
I I mean, I I can agree with scale. You know, I I live next to a business transitional district and I am ferociously protective of the small neighborhood community that is in the Hudson. And I am gonna be taking that same approach here as to how this works out. And I don't wanna see a four-story tower next to me either, so.
We appreciate that.
I can I can sense that, I I think we really need to look hard at how these things will develop and build, the whole idea of either individual lots or is it a common space? I think that's gonna be key as to how this plans out. Um, as we look at the what type of, and the number of type of elements that you might need on a property, obviously the less number the better, might think lead to how these things set on that site versus just a horizontal road parallel to the other one with everything stacked to one side and something stuck in the corner, I think there might need to be some uh what looks at the site planning of these things in general to actually get a sense of a cluster versus a bunch of row houses, it doesn't read as cluster to me right now off the top of my head, but that's just, again, a good action that I'm seeing right now.
Would these be individual sold units or?
Yeah.
They they would be, he's he's intending fee simple for each uh each one. Uh, and I guess I should elaborate, uh when I when I appear before boards, uh I've I've had the pleasure making presentations in front of Doug a few times, I I don't like to focus on architecture because architecture changes with market demand, they sort of tell us what they'd like us to build. But I can tell you, having seen what we're doing these days, or companies like mine or JMG Inc. is doing, these are, these are high-priced townhouses. I I'd be surprised if you can accomplish things under four hundred thousand dollars. You know, the days of two hundred, one hundred fifty, two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollar townhouses, you're north of three fifty guaranteed, probably pushing four hundred thousand dollars. I don't know that he's got the product and the square footage in mind yet or the elevations, but when you are asking somebody to live in an attached home, at that price point, it better be elegant and it better have a nice look, you know, elegant.
Is he intent like a two-story?
I suspect uh it it could be single and two. Uh, typically sometimes when we do the middle units, the the middle might be uh and if you'll indulge me a minute, I'm working on a project for my own company in the town of Salina. We're putting four home sites on eight acres, so five units per acre. This is fifteen on eight acres, so not two per acre. And we're taking advantage of zoning on our parcel that's gonna allow some two-family homes. So we're gonna be building something that probably hasn't been built in sixty, seventy, eighty years in Onondoy County, which is up-down two-family. So one ownership, two residences on the property, you go in. And so uh we're we're starting to try to take advantage or learn, relearn how to maximize density on parcels and get as much residence as possible. I I think the county government would probably prefer to see sixty-four apartments over here for my client dwellers, but that's not, that's not what my client wants of them.
I don't think that's the town to perform there either. The density, the density doesn't match the neighborhood.
And if I'm going down a path that you think is not the path of least resistance to get from where he is now to where we want to be, then we're all ears, this is just where we would like to get.
Would there be an HOA involved in this?
Uh, I I don't know.
I mean, the last thing you'd want to have is different colored roofs.
Right, right, especially when you have zero lot lines and the buildings are connected. I I just studied a bunch of these in Virginia, very similar to what you're talking about, especially with the over, one over the other and some twos at anchors, and very successfully done, they were also connected. So and those are some of the issues that we gotta know, the H, they had to require an HOA to take control of the of the structures, of the shelves.
So there are some classifications, it's one lot, generally only have one building.
Well, yes, that is correct.
Yeah. And then when you go individual lots, the buildings are built together, that opens up a whole nother can of worms of of legality, how it comes together. From a point of view, nature landings versus a townhouse is the outer condos versus individual ownership, you put that stuff too, so. Uh, those are, that's relatively new stuff for us here as a board, just because it's not been done a lot. So it's gonna be a um an educational process for us to dig through and just make sure we're seeing what you're seeing and trying to understand what you're trying to do. And I think we're gonna try and, you know, find a way to to really engage the sense of clustering and what the intent of clustering is versus necessarily the written word uh that runs to your benefit and to ours, because if it could be a better, if it could be a better layout and a better concept of how things feel, it's only gonna go to increase the value of the properties in my, you know, my business, so.
Uh, you know, we're showing you a planned view, overhead view, so it's not the most imaginative presentation.
Do you have any imagery, imagery of stuff that's catching your, your client's eye as to what the imagery would be? Is it not what you're gonna do, but what?
I think uh he's got some examples of some that he's already built, uh but I don't know what he's got in mind for color scheme or anything.
No, I don't, I I'm not worried about that, I'm just worried about overall character and flavor and feel. I think anything you can do to help educate us uh along those lines as we look at what the neighborhood looks like, the scale, what the neighborhood behind it is, what the boundaries are. And uh anything that helps us envision the vision, your vision is gonna be good. I I do struggle with the road going parallel all the way down to the site, it just seems like it's been chopped up and locked up. But I can, I'll keep going back and that's.
I think sometimes these roads can be visually intimidating on a plan because we're showing a sixty-foot right away.
Absolutely.
But the reality is we probably have twenty-four to twenty-six feet of asphalt, that's how we, that's what the situation is. So there's a lot more green between the house and the asphalt in both directions.
And then I guess the only other thing I can think of right now is, is Mark's not here, is the if these are individual ownerships and they go to individual lots, what happens on sanitary sewers and all that kind of stuff? And what's the capacities out there? Hot buttons, so things will have to have to be put in as a test of performance.
So I, if you suggest that we use clustering and the town board agrees and we come back, it doesn't mean that we have to. Uh, perhaps you'll let us proceed to the town board and get their opinion uh before we come back and then we can get deeper into hashing this out.
So what would you be proposing if it wasn't clustering?
More more than likely the apartments or we have to come in. If the, if my client's not inclined to build the apartments or sell the land to a builder or maybe other user that would be aligned with your current zoning. Uh, another alternative is seek a zone change.
Zone change.
Whatever would accommodate the type of house and that he's inclined to build.
Which is, he's inclined to build more higher-end townhouse style.
Does he choose duplex, triplex?
Well, new construction is all about that. No whoa and, so that, you know, we're in the business of building a luxury home, which this is about, this is about as in reach we can get to consumers as we find. What's interesting though is some of the young buyers that we're encountering, families with uh good income, husband and wife at work, uh the this price point's not out of reach.
Yeah, it's also downsized type of.
You got empty nesters, you got uh, you got uh single again, as we call people alone or uh young couples just getting started out.
Let me ask this question, if, I'm not trying to break this down right now, if it's eight-acre person's land and it's also going to be divided, you know, it's still a business transitional, but it's residential, that's really that, as as what they're trying to propose. What would without special relief, what would the max density be on that? Forgetting the townhouse, the apartment block, I think that's a non-starter visually from the town's perspective. Even if it's allowed and something that's gonna be, and it doesn't feel right, we're gonna agree with that too. How many lots would you break down, considering the lot size and this, this is just.
Yeah, I mean, I have to, I.
Yeah, but we gotta, those are the things we need to dig on. And what I would love to see is, I mean, we have to do our due diligence summit, but if you if you presented a, like a little chart that says, this is what's allowed.
I think you need to.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's part of the review is you need to be able to provide that density calculation to us.
Yeah.
And the way I read your reg is, before we go down that road and we invest that expense, we're asking this board to indulge us to get to the town board to see before we spend all that money and do that review, presentation, that the town board will even be willing to allow. I'd like to, I'd like to cross that hurdle, come back to this board to show you all the calculations. But it would center around the density that a a one-building apartment complex would allow. That that's what we believe would be used to satisfy the density calculation.
Which is how many units?
Well, without trying very hard, we showed a building that would be thirty-two. Now, I don't know if your town, I don't know if your town, some towns have a criteria as so many square foot per unit. I don't think your town does, like in town of Clay, it might be sixty-five hundred square foot on the property per apartment unit. You don't have that, it might be as as tall building as your code allows and as big a footprint on the property as your code allows.
We don't have a
We didn't feel the need to try to figure out how to max out the apartment density? We just saw the need to show you, here's thirty-two and we're coming down considerably.
Appreciate the fifteen versus thirty-two. Now, it's how we get, how do we get there that works for everybody?
I I'm not familiar with all your classifications of zoning. And then some towns have some zoning classifications that haven't been in use for a very long time. I don't know if they've been stripped from their zoning ordinance or if they're sort of put in your zoning regs, it's sort of no longer in use. But the project that we're doing in the town of Salina is zone R three and it allows for four thousand square foot lots, which really can give us forty foot by a hundred foot, which will give us, you know, perhaps twice the density on this property. Uh, I don't know what other forms of zoning you have that are on it, or if you can, you have forms of two families that are on the books.
We don't have, you know, we've never had that in there. I don't know what the, if I figure out what the procedure is moving forward as how we get to that point. I I still strongly recommend that there's a chart put together that says, this is what's allowed currently. You know, if you read the regs, whatever they state, this is what we can do, get thirty-two, four-story building, then, you know, cover, just not a lot of work into that. And then here's what we're looking to do and trying to get the fifteen of these, it means we want to have zero lot lines and the lot size will be whatever you're showing in there. And that would be, here's then a relief list that's required for that one so we can sort of see what the option wrote this.
Well, just probably, yeah.
I also think it's important to make sure that, I mean, the application is just communicating to the board that, you know, we understand the benefits of the cluster development.
Right.
And the benefits to the town. And uh, and maybe that's in the full application, it hasn't been reviewed, but I think that's important.
I think, so what has to happen right now is is what's happening? Which is, it's, this is the application, right, so um.
Just to get more, more information than what we're seeing on the screen.
This, this is basically a request um to apply the cluster, which comes here.
If you pull the, if you pull the cluster reg up that shows the process.
Yeah, everyone's seen it.
About, about coverage, right?
I don't know if they, I don't know if it's actually looked at it, it was just recently circulated, so um.
I have it here if you wanna, if you wanna see that, please.
But it, so this comes in, the density calculation is looked at and reviewed and seeing if that's what might be allowed. And then the next question uh is the criterion, right? So let me, so let me talk about that and.
So we, we're at this step, the event the developer desires to follow the procedures of this section, developer owner shall make written application with the planning board for the use of this procedure, which may be followed at the discretion of the planning board if the board's judgment, its application will benefit the town. And I think the next step would then be to go to the town. And that, like I said, I'm not, I'm trying to skip the step of showing how the clustering is done or what relief is required, but we didn't wanna go through that. I don't know your town board, I don't know if they're vehemently opposed to the use of clustering or not.
We'll find out.
We'll find out, we have to. It's been a while since I, I think clustering has come through, so I think it's gonna be a refresher course for everybody everywhere.
How many square foot are those, the three total?
You're talking about one building or the square footage in each unit?
Each unit, so uh one, two, three, where's the square footage of the three?
I I estimate they're probably about fourteen hundred square feet.
So like single, single person all week.
Yeah, we're, we're building, uh, there's, some of us in the industry are building single-decass homes of fourteen hundred square feet. Very hard to build something smaller than that.
I wonder.
Oh, okay.
So I think one of the things that's gonna come up is is part of clustering is is at those surfaces that benefit of the town is gonna be, you know, the, how, what's happened to open space? And how much open space and how are we, how is the cluster concept improving or maximizing the sense of open space to not only the tenants, the owners there, but to the perception of the general public, ID driving down the main roads and also from the backyard perspectives of neighbors behind? So I think, I think somehow something has to be done that shows what that, what you're doing to show that benefit besides just the words, say, this is a better, better project, we need to, we gotta show that.
We would probably show you what, how much impervious area the apartment complex creates, so the footprint of the building and all parking.
Yeah, I think all that needs to be shared.
Compared to how much less impervious area, the units and the public road would take up.
And then I'll take a step further and say, I'm gonna be looking, just again, because my sense of clustering is, you know, we can add up a whole bunch of square foot footage and find rhythms of space that are all green or not green and maybe to a percentage of urban surfaces. Also looking for how those spaces come together, become elements of space, not just a one or two scripts of space. So again, it's gonna go back to, I'm I'm trying to break down the rowhouse concept, but how does things get sited in a way where we get a sense of cluster, a sense of containing, a sense of the bigger green space that goes to the benefit of the property buy and then the ownership on the backside? Because I know they, I'm sure they'll be coming out, oh, once this goes up in front of the town board and hard on that stuff, because it'll be, it'll be part of the process.
I I I can't over commit on behalf of my client, but what I can say is that it's probably, they're probably impedible to reconsidering the total number of units. My style in the process is to always try to get the max and then it's easier to concede for the sake of a better layout and a better design. I I suspect he is, has the same inclination, but we usually start out with uh, you know, this is the number that we guarantee we won't ask. Yeah.
So again, let's go back.
I I think, so I'm just trying to give guidance as to what happens next. Are we looking for a Plan B? Um, and I said.
Or we're actually Plan C, I think there's a Plan A that's just what you develop on thirty-two units.
Well, right, but I, right, and there's a.
Trying to all get away from that.
There's a potential plan out there, I've heard some comments about that, but not from everyone.
So I I just went with the procedure, I'm just gonna read the procedure and react to that little bit of word on the page in the paper again here that says the, the planning board may require the other developer to submit a review of an application, which is the procedure if in the board's judgment the application would benefit the town. Right now I, right now we need to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling to evaluate it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. We're trying to, we're trying to jump to getting everybody that board before you know what, what it might be.
I feel like you've already answered, I feel like you've already answered the question when you said thirty-two apartments is non-starter. So you're saying it would benefit the town greatly, thirty-two apartments won't.
Yeah, but we gotta find it. We gotta get to what that, what is being replaced with. Yeah, but we gotta find it, we gotta get to what that, what is being replaced with, if that's a benefit, the way that's being proposed would be, would be benefit the town. So it's, it's asking for everything without knowing what anything is, and saying, gee, this is wonderful, because it's not the worst thing we could possibly come up with, as the, as the worst case scenario, which is what the other presentation is, you know, we're showing really, really awful, so that we can, anything must be better, so therefore it's good, and we must accept it. My answer is gonna be no to that one, until we get a sense of what those other options could be, show us how.
All my requests is at the moment is for the use of clustering, it's not to force that layout downward flow.
Right, accepted, you have to, accepted, you have to show, you know, something that might work, under the clustering that would be acceptable to the board.
Show them.
So that's, I think.
You're saying the layout that we just laid out would not work?
Not me, I didn't say that, and this is the board, you know, this is the board, and yes, you know.
I, I, I'm speaking in a generalization, I'm not saying anybody particular, but.
So, yeah, I think the reaction, I guess, should have an initial reaction to that.
I, I still see the, right, you know, yeah, I would already be acting, speaking, the, the, uh, I still am looking for a backup to either support you or to analyze what you're showing compared to what the other one is, just so we can see it, and, you know, I'm a visualist guy, but a, a design guy, but, but I also look at the numbers, and if the numbers even support what you're doing, it might, but we need to see those charts, and so we can track those numbers and understand, so, so this is a benefit because of the open space, we can look at, there's forty thousand square feet, maybe that it's open, and then, then we can also start looking at how it's, how it's allocated.
We like to, we like to work, you know, linear fashion, as opposed to throwing darts at work, so to tell my client, well, I'll show them some product that they may or may not like, and then invest in the product, show you elevations, say, well, how about this, without knowing whether we've even gone to the next step to allow clustering in the first place. It's hard, it's hard to spend those resources, spend that money on something we don't know what it would achieve.
Right, so, but when it goes to the, um, when it goes to the town board, this recommendation comes back, recommendation is say, who, who recommend clustering if you have a maximum of X units on the set?
Yeah, or they, a exposure board can kick it back and say, we allow the use of clustering in your analysis for the plan, but the planning board still has the authority to approve the subdivision plan.
There's, there's some, I guess what I'm saying is, if there, and I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to get, you know, people to react here, but it's the first time they've seen it, so.
Yeah.
It would.
If there's another plan, you've shown it, um, the second plan, right, the proposed clustering plan for how many units, and is that really, is that what's going to be, you know, the desire of this board, or is that? There, there's a reason that's shown, the reason that's shown is, so that this board can evaluate, we think that's good clustering, right? But it, but if it's not what the board wants, and again, first time they've seen it, so, you know, maybe everyone's not ready to react to it. Um, I've only heard like, it's said.
Again, yeah, again, I guess my reaction is, I think that's what we're looking for, it's just initial reactions. Uh, I don't have an aesthetic for what clustering development should look like, but I guess when I look at the massing of the site, organization site, it, it doesn't seem like, um, it's much different than having a block of buildings, it's just kind of, there's small gaps, small setbacks between chunks. So, just in terms of site organization, my reaction is I, I don't see this yet as, as kind of meeting the intent, and I could be, could be more informed about what the intent is, but right now, that's my reaction.
Yeah.
To me, it just looks like a large block in the back of the site, pushed all the way to the back with some small, very tight setbacks between clusters of buildings.
I'm also concerned, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you finished, I'm also concerned about if you're gonna ask for zoning changes, and what are they gonna be before we can recommend to the town board, we need to know what we're recommending.
But, but use of the clustering would not require a zone.
No, but you were saying something about getting zone change, you want to take fifty feet off.
You're talking about the buffer, you're talking about the buffer.
Yeah, you wanted to take, you wanted to change that, and I think you then, you did say, there might be some zone changing required. So what, what, what's that gonna be, so we can make a decision?
We're saying if clustering's not approved, that it's turned, it would be a first step.
Then it's, okay, then we would have, D, we had D now.
Because there are, there are some.
This is B, I'm calling this B.
I, I would also say that there are some geographic and geometrical limitations to the design. To get a public road in here, or any type of road, it would be probably impossible to double side the road with housing, and it would be undesirable to put such expensive units so close to columnar road. So ultimately, you're gonna, if, if, if something similar to this, or this is allowed, you're gonna see a one-sided road, uh, because you just can't get houses on the other side.
Yeah, I understand that.
What's the difference between this and Crown Point?
In what?
Crown Point, Crown Point, right, that's.
One seventy-three?
No, no, where, so what's operating rate, the golf course operating rate?
Point East.
Oh, Point East.
Point East, so what's the difference between this and Point East?
Point East was a cluster.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay, fair, okay.
I don't, I don't remember, was Point East cluster or P U D?
They don't have P U D here, it's just cluster.
I think you're intermingling that into a golf course.
And it's much bigger, much bigger.
There's a, there's a, there's a natural, there's a natural, I'll, I'll pick on that one, there's a naturalization of how that one sites and sets. You know, there's undulation to it, you're grouping, there's landfall that falls, there's a water element, it's a campus, kind of, kind of concept. Versus the linear thing, it's just been, you know, it feels like it's just been plopped in there right now, so the goal is to get to, the goal is to get to that, that kind of, that character, that, that goes a long ways towards saying, that's a good cluster, versus just using cluster just to get rope, when you're light of townhouses.
Yeah, zero lot line.
I think, I think Point East is fabulous, it's a great recommendation, I'm sure you probably reflect upon that project, it's a great project. The original developer went out of business. So sometimes the perception of what was a home run changes over time, Frank Vazika, Frank, Frank Vazika had to sell the piece up. Probably more based on the economy at the time than the design and the layout. And he had a cooperative golf course operator that was willing to give up after the golf course.
I might also see what you're gonna do with a vacant piece of land, I think they need some really good landscaping buffer too.
It's five lot across the bed.
So is there anything else we need to discuss, or is it just?
No, I think we need to, we need to cluster this together.
You know, we're, you know, we're, this is gonna need a cul-de-sac, type of concept, you know, program, and then, that, the meat, that's, instead of being space, this cul-de-sac, you know, instead of coming all the way in, one year, as it come in, and cul-de-sac, and then needs to cluster around the cul-de-sac, so there's a sense of, you know, same number of units, same lot, same type of breakdown of twos and threes, but they spin around and roll around, so there's, there's characters that promote versus just someone here, straight, I think, one year, where it's frozen.
That's, um, that was given, that was, that was given, that was given a little bit of consideration, oftentimes, these designs will, they're gonna, it's operating cloud, and whether they can, whether they can get it around there.
So cul-de-sac will not fit?
I, I don't know that we tried, I don't know that a cul-de-sac would, that, that we reconsidered the design to a private road, early on in evaluating this project, I think that was, like, private road was discouraged, because I think it was found, in its sense of bad experience with private roads.
It could be like. Clouds, yes, with the snow, back on the town road.
It would be, it would be a private, it would be HOA, it would be HOA in responsible for, for road maintenance, and all the, any asphalt, terrible conditions.
I, I think an HOA is not a question, because the cluster ties to the development, that leaves that as an op, as an option, I guess.
It's, it's, it's not, it hasn't been, it hasn't been ruled out, so it'd be open to the idea. I guess what I'm hearing is that some residential use and more than one unit is, is decided.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see a problem, yeah, I just. See how the layout is just placed, I know it's just a raw site plan, but we're gonna dive right into what we see, and see how it plays off the clustering, to get back to the clustering concepts and the, goes to the benefit of the town, and hearing, and right now, I don't see that being portrayed to the level that I think the town, the town boards are looking for, the point of how spaces could turn around, and I, the idea of, you know, some type of form to that movement to the form, so it's not just a, it looks like it's a row of houses in a straight line, um, I think is, is where my brain is going to break. Well, no, again, it goes back to, I'd like to see the chart numbers, I mean, what is it now, compared to what the first one was, I'm sure that areas are in there, so some can count those things. Right now, it's, there's extra spurting, asphalt, there's extra spurting buildings, it's, it's old, there's spurting a lot, and what's the percentage of paint space?
Right, and then it's potentially, that's kind of hard.
Yeah, that's right, the chart, just, because it gives us something to analyze, so, hey, if you get fifteen, four percent, and then, then you can say, oh, we just gotta stick it over the corners and split those guys around, and instantly you get something more dynamic play on, on the way, that's the core.
Yeah, tonight, do I understand that you also want to see, um, single-family clinics are permitted, and, um, multi, you know, two-family are permitted, or like, certain, is that something that you want to see?
The chart, the chart, what's it, we, we, we gotta bring up the chart, what's, what's allowed in.
Residentially.
Residential, business transition, just so we all understand.
I don't know if I saw two-family or.
I, I can't, I know, I know I looked at one for a little bit, I have this property.
Multi-family.
Multi-families, I think, yes.
What's a multi-family, I don't know, is a, is a subject of that, by default.
Oftentimes, this, uh, cause I, and we're using some terms of our, so sometimes, this is considered, somebody would say, well, that's a two-family, I consider that a single-family attached, so each unit is a single family, because there's fee ownership of each one.
Yeah, that goes to definition of how a two can come out.
First, a two-family, two-family would be one owner, but two independent residences on the same property.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
Two families allowed.
Two families allowed.
I, I, I like the concept, I, I'm not sure about my client, we're looking to market two-family homes too.
And I, I'd also see separate ownership stacked too, you know, so that goes back to.
That's a little more challenging, uh, for maintenance between the properties and things, but, but the, what we're seeing with the two families, we want to sell to middle-aged couple with an aging parent, in a smaller residence, middle-aged couple with a child that never leaves home, young couple that will supplement the ability to pay the mortgage with a rental, or a couple that's running a business that's allowed in a residential neighborhood out of the house, so they can use the smaller unit for their business.
Yeah, that's a good question, is that allowed in business transition, I know it's not allowed in our, or in a, in a shingle out in a residential, like, what's not allowed?
Yeah, you can't do that, you could have your at-home office, but.
Right, you can't have.
That's what we're talking about.
Not a business at a house.
But business transition.
But maybe an accountant or a cash preparer could take clients at their house, or, I, I'm not sure, I don't know your ordinance, but.
You can't do that in a straight residential, yeah.
So possibly businesses and a business transitional might not be allowed.
So, I think, I think it's, it's a transitional, I think that, I think that might be allowed in that, yeah, I, I, I was.
I, I don't know that my client, I don't know if my client is, is, is ambitious or is considering the use of the two-family designs that are, are competing.
Yeah, I'm not hung up on whether it's single-family, two-family, multi-family, oh, I, I think it goes to flow and feeling and character of, of feeling like it's a cluster versus a linear run-up to a townhouse stacking well.
Which maybe can be achieved without using the cluster development, right?
Yeah, what, what is the, you know, what, my, my next question is, what's the smallest lot size of residential allowed inside this, and maybe there's a way to go, tuk, 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 tuk.
I guess that was, that was, that's what I was trying to get at, is that what you want to see, is.
Yeah, I'd want to see, yeah, so we understand your, what your, what your processes are, what you're, what's getting you to where you're at, so we can understand.
Like, well, if, if you could do multi-family, how big is the lot size? Again, I haven't looked at it, so I don't know, because we're just reacting to this, but, um, if it's single-family, what's the lot size, what could you fit, et cetera? I think that's something we want to see.
Would all be dictated on the zoning, though, wouldn't it?
It is, yeah.
Right, yeah, so we do look up, dig it, plow into that section and, and break it down to see what the different types are, and what's, what's allowed for each one of those types, and that's easy enough to chop up and go, oh, we can split that in a, say, acres, we can split that in eight lots tomorrow, you know, and then get eight, and then, what can we do on each of those eight lots, or the twelve lots, or.
Right.
You know, and, and that's one answer, and then, this is another answer, and what's the difference between those, and what's, what's the benefit of each one?
Can I, can I negotiate here a little bit? If we take the step of considering alternative layouts that you might find more desirable due to spacing or composition, we, you would not perhaps consider stuck on the number fifteen, and we could perhaps ask for more?
I don't think the number.
No, it would be based on the numbers of calculations.
Based on, based on the sense of, of what you're doing.
Den, den, as far as developers are concerned, density comes a lot.
Density, yeah, I, yeah, density gives you more ability to do more things, so somewhere there's a magic of, the benefit of town is, to us, is a better benefit, because you have more ability to put more money into those amenity features that we're gonna demand from the perception of the town's side to go to cluster.
But you can have to acknowledge, though, that this is not an easy site for that reason, because of the main road and the access to it, so, I mean, what might be ideal or a perfect scenario on a perfect lot to maximize the density, maybe is not this site, and so, we gotta be able to react to that too.
Yeah, that's, we gotta be able to.
That has to massage the layout in a way that makes sense, it's not, it's not about maximum density all the time, it may be about, it may be some nuances to that. And this is not an easy site, I mean, you've, you've acknowledged that, you've got the road, you've got the, the buffer in the back, you know, you've got the, you know, there's just a lot of constraints.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, uh, I don't wanna put permanent labels on this project, it's not necessarily easy for single-family homes at these price ranges. It's challenging to make, create a market appeal. It's a home run to an apartment builder, they're buying up land everywhere, you sell it within a month if you open it up to an apartment builder, and you've got it as right use in your zoning reg, it's allowed as right now, it may take five years to get to the site line approval, but the, the, the use is allowed by right. So I, I don't wanna say, it, it's, for what he wants to do, my client wants to, yes, it's a little more challenging, but it's not challenging for other uses. Not as challenging, and this is just, so, this is what J M G Custom Homes does, they build homes.
Is there access available of, uh, columnar road, has that, has that been explored at all with the?
Haven't asked yet, haven't asked yet, I, I, we're, you know, I, I think the site lines are not a problem, uh, there's intersection up here, and it might involve a, um, traffic study to determine if it's possible, haven't, haven't, haven't worried anybody yet. If, if, if you consider this getting the ball rolling, uh, I, I'm sure we'd have no problem coming back, hopefully, uh, expounding a little bit, uh, or scoring a little bit, some of the things you brought up.
Yeah, I think that's.
Well, do you have enough to?
I think that's the direction, I go for, get some more information, how you, how you're trying to do that, I, I can, I mean, I think I, I'm for the idea of not plugging some warehousing or people building.
If it's a slow iterative, you give us feedback, we come back, you give us feedback, there's, there's, there's a, it's a goal in mind, we can, we can, we can engage in some of that. Sounds like what I'm hearing is, let, let's show the, let's show the town board before we can go there, the fruits of what you're proposing.
You don't want to do that, maybe, so, as well, so if you can help us to come up with something, if you can go to town board.
Help us, help you get there.
You know my client, I have to give this a second thought, it's easy.
I know you're.
You, you might be, he's as hard to sell as you are.
I think the town board is gonna be hard.
I think the town board is hard, but the town could never.
That's good, yeah, I appreciate that, it's good. That's good, yeah, I appreciate it, it's good. There's a, there's a certain element also striking while the iron is hot, we don't know what. Things are gonna look like a year, two years, three years, quarters from now, with the micron and what's going on, we know that land is all of a sudden way more expensive than it used to be. And taking advantage of pieces that, you know, five years from now, the designer might be, no, we want as many good designers as possible, because we need them. I I know, uh, my client had a very good experience in the last project, I I don't even know how old that is, he's gotta be at least fifteen years old or so, but had a very good experience of the other project.
I I didn't have the idea of the right scale for the property, because it's a small site, I'm looking at the areas right now, right, right here on the side, looking at stuff, cul-de-sacs back there, and. Single family. Homes, a home story, the truths, and. And along the road, it's, the barn is a, a barn program on one end, and then. We go across the street, which you get, which you get, it's, it doesn't matter what's going on there now, it's a series of moderately scaled residentially, very appropriately done residential. Scaled elements to keep the scale down, so, you know, the concept here is the the verbiage, not looking at the ground, I'm gonna cover that up right now. Concept of being smaller scaled elements that are nestled in and tucked in, I can get behind it, we just gotta get to how we can get. This perception of green space, open space. Soft forms into there versus just feeling like someone just, you know, like, I don't want to feel like we hired a site engineer who said, I can slam a road down the middle and pop everything down one side, call it done, because that's easy. That's not where I see this going. I think that there, there's a deciding opportunity here, and my own opportunity to to get what you want, and to give us, what the town board's willing to, we're willing to get behind also. Because if we can't get behind it, I know the town board will not get behind it. If we're, if we're, if we're neutral, the town board will do what the town board does. But if we get, if we can get behind it, then the town board is gonna look at that from the perspective that this funding board, it's a very good funding board. Is behind it, there must be value, you know, validity in that, in that recommendation, so the goal is. You gotta do enough to get us behind the concept, and no matter, it can change, but there's gotta be an overall feeling, concept that.
That's good, that's good, I appreciate that feedback, I make that presentation, I want to bring you with me.
Great, so I recommend we move, you move forward and and get some of the data, and look at the, you know, do a little bit of effort on it, and then, you know. Get it back to us, I mean, I think we're good.
Can we secure, can we secure a spot in next month's agenda, but if it doesn't look like I can accomplish enough, request an insurance until the month after that?
Sure, great, so we're we're on a track, so it would be a month from now. But and and there's a deadline, there's a deadline submission date.
Yep, the deadline, the submission deadline date would be May ninth for the meeting. For the avail, next available meeting under next track, which will fall on May twenty third, our deadline submission date to make that meeting falls on May ninth.
Do you have that information? And if it doesn't look like we can make that, we would request an insurance until the next one after that, and we go to some of that submission deadline.
Yeah.
Well, it's pending until it's, it's not.
It's that.
It's pending until it's not, so you're, you're always on pending mode, so.
You'd not be, again, I I've been doing this twenty five years, I've never had the opportunity to be in front of your board, I mean, familiar with some of your towns' projects, but yeah. One of your former board members was, uh, my father's cousin, was Joe Falcon once on this board?
No, no, I've been here longer than twenty years.
If anybody had any other questions, I hope.
I think that they're gonna, I appreciate, I appreciate going through the process. Okay, up next is Canalway comments.
I think they're on.
Thanks again, thank you.
I see them on the screen.
Bye.
Evening, everyone, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
You're good. I'm Jeremy Lindsay, I'm from Chipman Design Architects, we're the architect record for. Part of the team that's doing the work at Canalway, specifically the Chick-fil-A building. Um, and so we have something, it should be just a matter of course, but we know it's, um, it's been important, you guys have worked hard. To go through these different reviews, so we basically, we're looking at a brick change, um, and it's, it should be very, very similar, so I'm just gonna show you. Things that we're looking at, and we can submit, uh, physical samples, if that is something, um, that you would like to see, but, um, was gonna start, um, start here. So. Um, so all of you should be familiar with this, this is the, these are the elevations that were approved for the Chick-fil-A building, uh, at this development. And so what we're looking at is changing from the garnet blend to the Camden. It was, it was chosen for a pretty good match in terms of the coloring from the renderings, and also the the texture, but when it came down to supplying it, there were some, some issues on our G C side in procuring. Between this, uh, specification and also some delivery issues and that, all that, so. We talked with our design team at the Chick-fil-A headquarters, they picked this one as one that they thought was both, because they really liked the texture, um, and the color mixing of the garnet blend. And then to get a lot of those same characteristics or similar characteristics, but then also being a, um, a pretty good match to to this, so. You can actually see, um, that this is the. Uh, the garnet with the stone that was approved underneath, and then the, the Camden would be here, so this is where we think, that we actually get a little bit closer. Uh, to the, the balance that was happening here between, uh, what was approved on the elevation, so this is the approved stone, and then this was. Uh, what we interpreted as the, the garnet, but, uh, now we're hoping that you guys would be okay with this switch over to, uh, the Camden, I'll go back to comparison. Just a little bit lighter in terms of the red tones, uh, but we think it's a pretty good match, so, and this is something that our R G C has confirmed that they can supply, um, and keep moving on things, so. I think that is, that is all I have to present, um, any questions? While we're looking at.
I think it's pretty good.
Yeah, I did, I think it's more, actually more appropriate for the, for the area actually in color coloration.
And just to confirm, it is still a true brick veneer, this is not an adhered brick.
Right, yeah, and we're looking at the, the standard three and five eights, um, and so it will be, I mean, in in looking at this, you're still have some of the rustication. There'll be a cap to the stone, so you'll have a little bit of the, the stones proud of the, of the brick, but it will be a full, full, full mason or veneer.
Jeremy, can you pull the elevation, get it real quick and zoom in on the, on the, on the top of the water table bin?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just wanna, yeah, I I think the best way, definitely a capstone with a little relief on it.
Yes.
Great, okay.
Alright, so.
Let me, let me ask you another real quick, go back to elevations again, I just gotta.
Sure.
Myself now, so, um, how far back are the window walls set behind the front plane of the brick, I can't quite read the shadow on the screen.
Yeah, so, what we're looking at, so the distance from the face of the stone to the base of the paneling, that fits with this, the storefront system that we, that we've got here, and we're looking at. Just about three or four inches, I could, I could send, submit that detail.
No, that's, yeah, yeah. So, and is that base panel in plane with the glass wall, or is, is there a, is there a thicker wall with the glass, with a wood, with a window wall sitting on top of it, or is it in plane as part of the window wall system?
It is in plane with the, with the window wall system.
So the glass is back the same three or four inches also?
Correct.
My only request is, when we look at the rustication of the top, of the top cap, that that cap overhang returns back to, uh, to just, so it's, so it's not just. An overhang on the front face, but also on the, on the return jams back into the window walls?
Yes, that actually, that that will, I mean, you don't quite see it here in that detail, but yes, you'll have about an inch or so.
Yeah, it should, it should wrap, I just wanna make sure it's wrapped, you know, not just like if someone took a saw and cut it out.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Great, I I like the brick, I think it's, I think it's a better brick, actually.
Okay, that is wonderful here, uh, we will keep moving and go with the Camden.
Right, so, yeah, so so we'll just, um, do a motion to amend the prior settlement plan, uh, site plan to only change the brick for the building to, what's it called?
Yes, roll up, let us see the name of it, Jeremy?
Yes, it is the Camden from Triangle Brick.
Brick, Camden.
Wait, um, although their, although their findings and conditions of the original approval are in full force to act.
Okay, and, uh, make that motion, Ken.
Yes.
The other favor, uh, any on this?
I did raise one.
Intermeasures? Your statement?
I think mine, I mean, it's all, I would say now. So you guys, Jeremy, any?
Alright, is there anything else?
No, that's all of them.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it, Ken.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is Shake Shack.
Hey, good evening, can you hear me, my name's Jim Manguso.
Yes, Jim, we got you.
Excellent. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thanks for having us in tonight to speak, I apologize, I couldn't make it in town this evening, but we'll be there for the next meeting. Uh, my name's Jim Manguso again, Lower Manguso Architects, I'll be representing Shake Shack. In conjunction with myself is Patrick Sheedy from Carmina Wood, civil engineer for the project. You guys may or may not remember, I was part of the design team about a year ago that was proposing the Rachel's Mediterranean Grill. For the thirty two seventy five Erie Boulevard, corner of Bridge Street. We had accomplished site plan approval, we had accomplished some variance requests and approvals, and unfortunately, that project, uh, fell apart. Uh, for the owners of Rachel's, so what has been given to us is an opportunity to have Shake Shack kinda take over what was started off with Rachel's. Uh, some benefits to this tenant is that it's a single use tenant, where the original proposal for Rachel's was a multi use building, we had Rachel's in conjunction with a small tropical smoothie to the side. So we had some sign variances associated with that that would not be required for this. The other benefit of Shake Shack's opportunity for us is that they are looking to take the, the previous friendlies down to the ground, we're going to do similar to what we did with Rachel's, reuse the foundation. So the footprint will remain largely what you see, but this would be a brand new building, uh, that would really be tailored to the likings of, uh, what I think we were looking for when we were doing the Rachel's. A building that's a little, little less contemporary, a little more modern square, it's got that nice presence facing the corner. Shake Shack is, is got a prominent patio, I know that this is a really high end district for walking source and stuff like that along the canal. Um, all those things play into our favor, um, this again would be no drive through. They would request that we achieve the same variance for the parking, um, we are introducing some granite curbing within, we're taking out friendlies former parallel spots. Bringing up the dumpster corral is what was previously agreed to with what was going to be the friendlies, so we are deficient for cars. Um, and we're required to get that variance again for this project.
Hang on just a second, we're gonna get that, get your images up on the screen.
Okay, yes, sir.
I thought we saw six cars. Are you sure it's not six, fifty, forty nine to fifty six?
Well, yeah, see, the, the original friendlies had fifty four cars. Um, we had backed down, but when we take, we're taking the vestibule off the friendly, so we're gonna remove a hundred and sixty three square feet, bringing our project down to thirty one. Uh, thirty one eighty divided by the sixty cars per spot, or sixty square feet per parking spot brings us to forty nine required. Or, excuse me, fifty three required.
Okay, that's different than what we saw on Tuesday.
Okay, great.
That helps.
Limited rates.
With the variance, yeah.
Does the variance have a sunset?
No.
No, runs with the property, right?
Right.
And the variance is for how many spaces we hold?
We'll have to, I'll confirm it.
We'll confirm the numbers. Jimmy, what the original variance was for, and how many spaces was in the original variance, do you know?
The, the original variance was for seven spaces, so it went from the original fifty four, I believe, down to the forty nine, or the fifty five to the forty nine. Um, but we wouldn't require that now, because I think we're gonna take that vestibule off, it'll shrink the building a little, works to our favor, we still do need the variance for some cars, though.
Okay.
There are few research, right?
It was for seven.
It was for seven?
Yeah.
Yep, so our building would be, um, again, a square shape, our high end would be on the twenty four foot four to the top of the parapet. Our low end would be nineteen feet, we're using that front end parapet to screen all the mechanical equipment on top, so no visuals from the street lines. Um, the building is built of metal panel systems, hardy plank, and some brick veneers that we use, so it's a really a modern look, it's, it's very, very attractive. Um, I'm not sure if you're seeing the elevations that we saw.
We're gonna get those next year, I, I had some comments on it on our prep meeting on Tuesday, so I just wanna see what you're seeing, and. Oh, these aren't the colored ones.
Yeah, she's down though.
She got. Yeah, I have a quite, I have a question about what one of the materials is, I couldn't quite tell, so.
Okay, yes, sir.
Alright, so the, um, on the south elevation two, or the west elevation, you have a, the material over the top, and then you have a, that you have the tanish material that we're seeing set between the window, window lines, what, what is that material?
Okay, I'm not seeing the screen that you're seeing, but so the tan window, the tan stuff is gonna be a fiber cement. System, a nichihua system that we're using. And then the, um, I don't have the.
We're gonna, we're gonna get it up here. You know, is there a possibility of letting that be like a tan, a tan brick, instead of a nichihua product?
Yes, sir, um, it would, yeah, the, the beauty of Shake Shack is, is they've got, you know, a number of stores, they're regional, so we've got several options to choose from, we do have several brick systems that we can pull from. They have some nichihua's, and they do have some metal panels, so we certainly can steer the look of those facades, and we're doing the same thing in Greece right now, where there's been some comments, and we're adjusting those. Colors to accommodate those requests.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be curious to see that as a, getting an actual brick element as part of this elevations, mixture of materials, that's, uh. Apropos for what the town of Wood is typically looking for, for, uh, quality of material and durability of material. And then my other comment on some of this is gonna be, you answered the question about screening all the mechanicals, that was one that we came up with, we weren't sure where the actual thing was behind those. Panels is the, I think it's the, what you're calling the east elevation, that faces back down Bridge Street. And you have the two blank, what I call the blank elevations, east and north, and now I'm gonna, and I'm, I'm just popping up my. Plan, see what's, which one's which here, uh, so this is the.
So the, I would assume the north faces, um, behind us, kinda where the, uh, the, there's like a plaza behind us. And then the east elevation should face towards Bridge Street, we have another, uh, plaza there where we have kind of a joint access to Bridge Street.
Yeah, so, south, south is facing, what we call, south is facing Bridge Street, and west is facing Erie Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking, I'm looking now at the east elevation, which is the long view that actually faces Bridge Street from the approach side, which is a very prominent elevation for us as we drive down Bridge Street, heading towards Erie Boulevard. And so I'm looking to pull the quality look of the front and side.
Yes, sir.
Got back elevation, so that's not a blank wall as we drive up, I think it'd be better for Shake Shack for its visibility.
Absolutely agree.
East elevation number two. Yeah, facing the old one's property, yes, I think if you could put some effort into generating that, that'd be great.
I think what, there is a dumpster over there, too. Right, isn't the dumpster on that east elevation?
It, it would be, it would be on that east elevation, we slid it up, the original friendlies had it, of course, right on the property line, we have slid ours up in conjunction with the front edge of the, of the building. Um, we certainly will dress up that side of the elevation, because I agree Shake Shack would also want that to, um.
We wanna look at sliding that back further, so that there's more of the building expressed from the public's perspect.
What I was also gonna say, too, is that, I mean, the enclosure itself could use the same vocabulary as the building as a way of breaking up.
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Yeah, there's an opportunity there to use something architectural, more architectural with that enclosure, because it's so visible.
South face of Bridge Street or not, I don't get it.
Uh, their, their version of. Uh, their, their version of south is, uh, south faces Bridge Street, the.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's not, yeah.
But it's not.
It's, it's, well, it's rotated at a forty-five degrees, so it's, it's, we can pick it up and pick, that's the problem.
It's that point, yeah, it's that point.
Well, it's not forty-five degrees.
Yes.
They're calling north to the left.
Yeah, they're calling north to the left, yeah.
Okay, right, 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 okay.
So east face, or, uh, west faces the street and south faces the street.
So when we're driving down Erie, I see the nice.
See the nice wall facade as you go by it on Erie, you see the, another nice facade. But when you're coming in from six ninety, coming down Bridge Street towards Erie Boulevard, you got Olm's on the right, and that, that whole building isn't, isn't, is visible from people across the parking lot. It's wide, it's, it's very visible. So the east elevation two, the bottom left corner is a dynamic elevation that should be celebrated, and that's also where the culture of the dumpster is, when that sits there or slides back, or it's a piece of the architecture, I think is the right solution here.
Maybe that, maybe that brighter horizontal panel could turn to the corner and capture it. If you go around, that, that would actually.
Can, can you hear this okay? Because I know we're out of.
No, I, I, I'm hearing it fairly well. I, I love the idea of sliding the dumpster back. I, I, I wanna say the last board was pretty pretty, pretty sure that they wanted to slide that up front, and I think that was kinda to accommodate some of the other, you know, gives that we were getting for having the multi-tenant. I think by sliding that dumpster back, it allows me to take that storefront on the south elevation, wrap it around the side kinda where we're showing the mandor. And it really gives me the ability to make that look like the front of the building or the south elevation. And then the dumpster, we would tie in with a conjunctive system that works with the building, so it almost disappears. I think that would really solve all of our, everything we're talking about.
Yeah, I, I think Jim's spot on, and if you recall, the last time he was in, um, there was a lot of thought put into the site plan, and the Rachel's was a little bit tougher, um.
And the two tenants, it had, we issued two tenants on that side, that's why.
And, and Jim's been great, you know, we've been working, he's been working with the department behind the scenes to get to this point right now.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so he, he started, he reached out to us, probably, I don't know, Jim, when he first came up with Shake Shack, right, maybe February times.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Right, so I mean, you know, he's, he's been great to work with, so, um, I think the ideas are great, you know, hopefully this will bring it.
Are you the last site plan approval leave the cross-access to the other?
And we're.
I think, right, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but Alana and I were just going over that. But I believe we, we left it as is, but the intention of the applicant was to keep it normally closed.
And is, here's what happened, um, when Rachel's had originally taken possession of the site, it was the adjacent tenant that actually put the bollards and the chains in. But part of Rachel's purchase of the property, there is a cross-access easement that does have, uh, legal documentation behind it. That access is to remain, and we do own the rights to have that access, so our intention would be to maintain that access, so customers and folks that need to get out to the light on Bridge Street can use that cross-access through the parking lot. I believe it was really blocked off because with the building being vacant, we had a lot of cross-access traffic coming through there. And it was mainly to prevent people from parking lot intrusion incidents.
This session proven to.
Um, can you, um, can you please provide me with that cross-ass, access, um, agreement?
Absolutely, absolutely will do.
But in terms of its, of its purpose, so legally it's in place, but what, what does it do? Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I look.
I mean, there must have been a reason for it originally.
Probably to get out and go Bridge Street.
Go Bridge Street.
North, and we said we're going down Erie and doing a U-turn.
Right, all the way back.
Come up the right, the left. Turn up the spring, yes, so they come up the spring, and go across that way to.
Close enough to the side.
Nah, it's, it's still.
Couple hundred feet.
Yeah, it's not like, it doesn't line up.
Yeah.
I don't know if you all saw the letter, I've been sent out too much before the meeting, but, um, the, the owner, um, next to this property has had some safety issues with that connection and, um, hopes that that will not be made open, so that's something that will need to be discussed a bit more.
Oh, the Olm's, the Olm's owners were?
No, the, um.
Yes.
Oh, Michael Dorr, okay, Michael Dorr, okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to get, get the.
But I guess with, with the incident, parking lot, they've had some nervousnesses.
Yeah, cuz it's, cuz it's been open, and yeah, I, I guess, I, I guess the question is, when, when, when it gets become a activated parcel again with.
Shake Shack's pretty busy too.
Yeah, and, and a parking lot design that's, that not visually, a drive-through, high-speed drive-through, does that change the perception of how traffic will use, that's basically, will that be suggested go down? That's, that's the big part.
Well, I think part of his issue was that where the, where the cross-access, it goes right through the middle of their parking lot. Um, and it's a, there's a store there where there's lots of kids coming in and out, so there were concerns about traffic moving through there and potentially getting a kid.
Those, the ones that caught a child.
Yeah.
It'll go right through the middle, it goes along the back edge, but.
Maybe talk about some signage.
Yeah, yeah. So we'd see, we'd go back in a certain place and push for, yeah, signage might be something.
I'm just, I guess I'm asking the question, is it, is it needed? Is it a limited access kind of cross-access?
Yeah.
Do we put, do we put some audit to that before it goes to approval? That's all.
Then you make it down, so it's not a.
Yeah, but it's, that's what can be.
Yeah, so we make it, we make it up, yes, it's legally there, but it's not, hey, two lanes, it's not.
I think it's either you have it or you close it.
Yeah.
There's no in-between, cuz there's, you, you drive.
Don't even put it out there, no.
Maybe it's a somewhat, something, something you need to.
Maybe it's a, but, yeah, plow it, everything's. But this limit says, we're, we're now tied into something, the document's signed. Okay, Jim.
Is there any discussion also about sidewalk along Bridge Street?
Yeah, it'd be nice to continue that sidewalk down Bridge Street, it's coming.
I, why didn't we do it the first time?
Yeah.
That's surprising.
Got to be challenging down, down by, um, the dollars and down there.
You know, I, I think. Why we had to.
I think it had something to do with, everything was just being developed.
Yeah, I, I feel like DOT was in the process of building, and it wasn't quite clear what they were, what they're building.
Clear, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Doug, do they have anything down where they're tying in by chimneys? Is there sidewalks down there? Part of the DOT plant?
Part of the DOT plant?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, but it, it's his time, but.
Right.
That shouldn't impede us from putting sidewalks in.
Well, if it, I mean, if they're, if they're gonna do something there pretty soon, then.
Can you pull up, can you pull up the Google? Of this? It's pretty, right now it's a DOT snow shelf, you know, down that whole side right now.
Um, I'm not even sure I would call it that.
Yeah, it's just a.
What do we call it?
A wider, wider zone, it's like a half-breakdown turn lane.
Well, this, this, uh, this is approved, we bet they wanna put a sidewalk part of the jeweler.
Except there was, there was no room to do it there.
Yeah. Right. The jeweler was back right up to the corner, couldn't get in there.
Then there was some bitches in there.
Let's go down around, let's go down the other side of Bridge Street. There's the bollards. Back out so we can see the sidewalk zone coming down towards chimneys.
Yeah, there's, there's.
That could be sidewalk.
It's a big swell.
Yeah.
Well, I think it was talked about, how you could put the sidewalk in along Bridge Street if you needed to fully bury the culvert and fill it in, to, you know, to build a, to build it, and that may be the case long-term. But we are really activating this whole corner. I think it would be a shame not to have a safe place to walk around.
Thanks, not to have, yeah, every place we can go after, we should get it, especially what's going across, across the street right now, too.
I mean, it, it has changed even since Lawrence.
Yes. It's part of the trail.
Is there a safe crossing in front of that right now? To, um, the Chick-fil-A side?
Yeah, most of the.
Yes, yes, and then that would tie into where we put the, the entrance gate, the, you know, the stone walls that are in there, ramp down into their site from that same corner. So that sidewalk's already going to that spot right now.
Right, across Bridge Street is.
This side, the sidewalk, you went down and then back to Olm's, it's a blank.
You pick it up, you pick it up again next time.
Yep. Ideally, it'd be nice to tie it all the way, you know, eventually all the way down through the chimney's property.
Down to the traffic light, but eventually, that'll be the plan.
Yeah, that's sealed. Yeah.
Hey, guys, it's Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Um, for what it's worth, I'm looking at the plans for, which I think are the latest plans for the, um, highway improvements for the, the light at Sealy. And they have a sidewalk on, let's call it the east side of Bridge Street, but not the west currently.
East side would be Chick-fil-A side, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Struggling with east-west, north and south.
Yeah, I understand, that's, so yes, uh, so they're, they're running a, a sidewalk up along the, the Chick-fil-A side. But not anything on the side of the road where this particular development is. So you, you would have the, the sidewalk access from Erie to Sealy on the Chick-fil-A side, but they're not currently planning to do it on the other side.
But the rest, please, are crosswalk, crosswalk markets, Sealy across Bridge Street?
Uh, yes, they do. So that would get you access to the multi, you know, you know, multi-use development on the other, you know, on, on, on the, again, the west side or north side of Bridge Street.
Between the open, uh, canal walls we're doing on Sealy and the other side, on this side.
I was thinking, I was thinking about that, but I, I feel like, I feel like the Chick-fil-A site is actually is a site that's more appropriate there.
It's, it's got the wall on the backside.
Yeah, and it's, and it's part of tow path and, and the waterway, but I'm not sure of this site. I know, I know the sense of everything, yeah. Kind of like the sidewalk on the east side, do you?
On the Chick-fil-A side.
Right, go away from Erie, all the way up to Sealy.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess, I guess the point would be as if you're gonna have them put a sidewalk across that part of the parcel, you'd have to go to DOT and ask them to continue it up as part of their project, otherwise it will truly probably never go anywhere.
And there were some significant culverts that you were demonstrating.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, those, those were beyond this, to be honest, but.
Yeah, ask the DOT.
I should find out what the. I don't think we spoke from them, yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a, in the traffic area, sidewalks on both sides is not, you add, then, the DOT can get behind that, so.
So are we asking the applicant to cull the interior or what, or is that something?
We'll reach out to the DOT too. I think they got the direction as to where we're taking the architecture of the site. We've got some legal things to track down on the cross-easements, so we understand what's in play.
Do, um, are we gonna deliver some comments? Did they stumble upon the applicant here tonight? Or do you think the applicant has some good idea? There's not that much, cuz it's mainly a finished site plan.
I think we've put some bullet points, just. And the site, the site, the, the, the site plan is the same as what we're operating from the department's standpoint, we're filing the site plan.
Yeah, but what they're talking about moving back the, the dumpster.
Dumpster, tying in architecturally, bringing.
So, so Jim, Jim would have to send us that, right?
Yeah, correct.
So I think the action item.
I will absolutely do that.
I think the action items are for Jim to pull the dumpster back and to show us the wraparound, and that's it. I don't think there are any other comments, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And tying, yeah, yeah.
And Alana will follow up with the DOT.
I want to add this to the work session, is, I don't think we're gonna need it, but I, I would like to see the, um, easement as soon as possible, so we can see what the options are.
Yeah, good point.
What the, what the board thinks.
We can read that to the office of my authority. Okay. Jim, if you're comfortable with knowing what's on your task list, if you just wanna, as soon as you get it in, we can get it around to the.
Absolutely, I will start this tomorrow. I'll definitely have you something early next week. I'll get the email over to you guys with those cross-axis easements. Uh, the legal language we were given when we took the property, so feel free to use that as you need to. Um, and to your point, we were working with DOT when it was Rachel's, and I think we did get some of those cross uh, drawings inserted to show those cross-walks in the, the striping anyway. Um, but I thought that we were dead at the corner there on the sidewalk then. I know we were talking about it then, and I think to, to your point, it either didn't exist or it was still in development.
Okay.
Excellent, I have my marching orders. I appreciate everybody's time this evening, and I will have something immediately over to you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a great day.
You too. Okay, next up McDonald's.
I think you skipped Stark K nine.
Oh, did we skip one?
It's not on the agenda. It, I mean, it's not on the, I just printed.
We'll do Stark K nine.
Which one is this?
The Stark K nine, um, they were here once before. Yeah.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Jean Bolent, um, Lisa McCormick, and we're with Stark K nine, uh, Community Training Center. Um, we're looking to rent six Atler, um, and six Atler, um, to do dog training, um, at, uh, it's a perfect building for us. We had three questions, I think, from this group to address this time. Uh, the first was the parking lot count. There's twenty-seven total spaces, uh, there. Will need at most fourteen. The maximum number, um, that we need, that may be present anywhere in time is fourteen. Uh, we'd be running two simultaneous classes, at most six in a class, and then instructor, so that's fourteen spaces.
So, I mean, is this, is the scope of the, of the work really just modifying the parking lot?
No, we're, oh, there is no change.
Change of use.
Sorry, I, I have, I missed an attempt, I don't know.
You're obviously missing one.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's no, this is a change of request, and we're making no changes inside or outside the building.
It was just coded for industrial before, so we just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, what we were doing in that building.
It is, it is a use, um, an allowed use, um, and I think they talked about that the, the last time we were here.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's under industrial, it's just a change of use.
Yes, and the, the question is whether it, it's, you know, it really a, a change of use, I mean, it's, it's an allowed use. It was here before.
Plus the test, too.
Yeah.
Well, we're not sure exactly.
It's been empty for so long.
Yeah.
Got it, good, okay. So that's why they're here, for a change of use, and then the question is, is there anything else the board wants to have done? Um, I think that when we were in here, it, we just wanted to get a, a feel about the parking and was it sufficient? And make sure there's nothing else that, um, you, you could put down.
You had a issue, we're, we're solving too, right?
Yes, we are, um, there were, the landlord or the owner that is, is working with the DEC regarding some of their quality issues so that we can move forward with our lease.
So we can certainly, um, we can, we can do an approval just for the change of use.
So, issues that had come up last time, that we provided comments on, where the parking, like showing the straight parking on the plan and some landscaping.
What was the landscaping, was that addressed at all?
So I, yeah, we're not making any changes to the outside, we don't need to, and I did call the owner, and, um, he shared that the landscaping is the same as when they purchased the property, and they have no plans to change. and they have no plans to change, um, what was already there. So they're not doing anything on the outside.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the, the Google street view, and this could be out of date.
Yeah, that's.
But there are two dumpsters, right, smack in the middle.
Yeah, those aren't there anymore.
They're gone, they're gone, are they yours? Are they yours?
No, no.
No.
They're not, oh, there's two dumpsters in the sidewalk too. Yeah, BTI came down.
Oh yeah, that's, I don't think that's, yeah.
That's an old one.
And I don't think that's on, yeah.
Yeah, do we, do we?
Yeah, because there's, there's not any of that landscaping there at all anymore. If you actually do a Google search under Cruxy, they actually have, it's all cleaned out, it's all, that's how they purchased it. At least that's what we were told.
Guesses there need to strike the, strike the law, show the parking spaces.
I think from a code point of view, the answer is yes, at least needs to be documented that what's provided, so. So the plan needs to at least be updated.
So. Yeah, so I was gonna say that.
So it has to be.
Not you.
Thank you, that's why I thought I was gonna say, oh no.
We just gotta find a way to get Queen hands to make sure you can get it.
Oh yeah, exactly.
You know, I, I know the owner wants, here's our space, give us your money.
Exactly.
I'll feel happily, but he's gotta, gotta keep the building up with who his tenants are too, to provide a safe place for your orbit, uh, children or. And it kept burning, it's like, it's shown, it's picked up.
So it does have to be striped?
I think, yeah.
So.
Otherwise, people are gonna come in and anybody parked willy-nilly, and then next, somebody parks in the wrong spot or in an area, then somebody runs them over, it's because they don't know where to walk. There's gotta be some indication of, or people should be, yeah.
So does that, does that hold us up though, from just changing our use? From, I mean, I know you'd have to address the other issue with the actual owner.
Well, I mean, if, if the board said that the site plan needs to be modified, then.
It's like saying survey.
Right, the survey, right?
You're gonna like survey right now.
And that it needs to be, the striping shown. Then you would have to negotiate with your landlord and say, you're not gonna let us within, to do the striping.
So.
Or, or anybody.
Like, I guess what it means is we just can't, we just have no way of determining the parking count.
Yeah.
If no parking spaces on the site or on the site plan.
So. So I determined the parking count.
Yeah, we know there's.
Based on the length of the building and your standard requirements, which was ninety-six inches. So there's parking.
There's length, but not, not as physical, probably wanting.
That way? That way, and then. Three there. So, um, okay, there is, let's see, room for sixteen spaces perpendicular to the building, and another eight spaces perpendicular to the front. And there's enough if you, this is sixty-two, uh, sixty-point-five feet. So if you subtract the nineteen, um, nineteen from the width of the additional row is nine-six, and that still leaves you with thirty-two foot aisle in between the two. So I think the parking is sufficient, um.
So is, is it a stripe, you're just, it's.
It's, it's very striped. Well, it's, it's got some striping, it's faded though, so you can't, it's not as defined as obviously I'm sure you would like.
So, yeah.
I don't, I mean, misunderstood, I, I'm just saying that it should just be documented for the record that that's the parking, and that it's existing and can accommodate what you're looking for. And I guess the question is, should it be clearly marked on the site if it's not already?
I mean, it's a minimal thing to ask, that there's nothing else to.
You'd have to do it for a CFO, right?
So I, I think, I think the larger thing is, right, from, from a code standpoint, um, well, it's one thing to have it marked in the field, but I think the codes officer needs it on a drawing.
Of course.
To go out, to go out and confirm, right, if there's a complaint.
It's simple, draw some lines on a drawing, say there's ninety-six by eighteen feet.
And, and quite honestly, whoever Bill rents, Bill Thresh owns the building, which we can tell him, right?
Yes, right.
So whoever Bill rents it to, he's gonna have the same issue. So he, he's gotta, he's gotta put this on the site plan, you know, because I'm, I'm looking here, and where's the parking? Is the parking against the building or is it the drive up?
Or is it on the side, yeah, and then it's gonna just strip out and walk, walks out against the building?
Right? Yeah, is it, is it in the, is it in the, is it in the, in the front, is it close to the building, or is it back towards the street?
Or is it centered, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Because they need fourteen, so I mean, there's plenty of room for the parking there.
Plenty of room for us.
We just need him to, you gotta go back to him and tell him, needs to document the parking, right? Go out there and tidy up and, and roll, get a roller out and spread the, spread the lines out again.
Yeah, and it looks like Colin did the, the, the survey, right, so I mean, you know, Colin could do that in five minutes.
Fifteen minutes, yeah, it's, it's, you know. That's, it doesn't mean anything big, formal site plan, it just needs to be, you know, just something on the survey that documents where it's gonna be. It's all it needs to be.
So it needs to be shown on the survey where.
Needs to be on a drawing, that way it can, that way it's legal here, and, and when they go out, they can go, yep, there's fourteen, minimum fourteen spaces there.
Okay.
And they go one, two, three, four, they can count the spots, the slots.
So he does need to actually strike that, or does he need to put it on the plan?
Yes, both.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask something, because I'm not clear, and.
Okay.
And I'm not the owner, so it's not out of my pocket for the striping.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah.
But it says, uh, part B, change in use or intensity, and this is under Town and Duit zoning regulations, one ninety-two dash one oh three off-street parking?
Yes, I know what that says. So you're saying, well, it's not a change of the intensity of the use, but it's not.
Right.
There. At all.
So why wouldn't it be there?
It should be. That's why, that's why over time, when a new project comes in, we're, and trust me, this board's been very lenient.
Yeah, I know.
We may have seen what's happened here tonight already, so.
Normally would be after the whole building.
Yeah, so they're just saying, what's the, what's the, what's the minimal here that this board is willing to accept?
Yeah, okay.
Old side, interior, interior car.
Because it's an industrial zone, is, bro, there's.
Get some line, let's get a safe.
Like, like, but you're right about the, the change in intensity of use, that's a thing, but like literally, you don't even know what's there, is really the problem right now. The change.
And I, I look at the neighbor's building, who is in the same state of parking issues there to the other side of you, and.
It's very clear, yeah.
It was striped, like the one on the left is striped, the one on the right is striped sort of, are, you can see up front, but they fade away as they go to the back, so.
Yeah.
It's exactly what's happened here, and if they came in, we'd be having them restrict their lot too.
Okay. So I will let the owner know that they need to re-stripe it. Do we need to come back then?
Um.
Can we?
You know, we can, it's not that you physically will have to come back, like you can send it on Zoom and we can have a meeting, but in order to do the approval, we need to see the map, the striping. And then there's gonna be a timeframe within which he has to do it. And, and he can talk to, um, our, um, head of the department, um, which is Alana Cantrell. And, and he'd probably talk to Alana, right? So if he has any questions, he can talk to her.
How nice I am to you.
Guys, it's, it's Mark again.
Yes.
Um, they should show an ADA space and signage, van accessible, et cetera.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So one ADA space, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, well, to Mark's point, right, I mean, whoever puts this together should see what's required for a building of this size and use.
Okay.
Right?
I think anything, I think anything under twenty-five spaces requires one ADA space.
But, but, but Mark's just.
Yeah.
Being next, right, so somebody, whoever puts it together, he's to confirm that. That site plan is supposed to be done by a designer.
So.
We're all trying to be nice right now.
So Colin Craft.
We appreciate that.
Can do that, he can do a simple, uh.
Yeah, Colin can do that, yeah.
He's a, he's a surveyor.
Yeah.
Are you in a rush a little bit?
Well, we were.
We wanted to be in by summer or March. Yeah, but.
As quick as he can get it back, I believe. We can kick it right around again, that's. I mean, this is so simple, we could slip this in any, anywhere, this is one of those things, I think we can slip it in any, any, anytime.
Any meeting, yeah.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Including Tuesday morning, we make it a, little legal meetings for us on Tuesday AM, so we can slip it in as soon as you make it happen.
So it's a clarification for the vote, we only need it on the map, we don't need it.
Correct, we, we can put it time.
Correct, we can, we can put a timeline on it, you know, to execute the work.
Good luck, ladies.
Thank you.
And that is why you go in there, so it's, uh, we're all for you.
Thank you.
We're trying, we're trying.
Thanks very much for all being so nice.
You're welcome, nice to see you.
Bye-bye.
All right, now to McDonald's. There we go.
Can we stick this in the TV?
Yep. Towards the top.
Where's the top? Why don't I see it? Probably looking right at it. Oh, the modem, I'm looking at the TV, that's why, my bad. Okay. And if we can just open up the site. Uh, good evening, I'm Randy Bebaut with Bowler Engineering, I'm here on behalf of McDonald's USA LLC.
Excuse me, Randy, what's your, it's probably your last name?
B-E-B-O-U-T.
Thank you.
So, uh, Bowler was involved when this project was remodeled, uh, I wanna say several, um, several years. The intent here now is to, um, just add a second drive-through lane. So we'll have a side-by-side drive-through, which is very common at the majority of the restaurants. So, uh, we've depicted that, what I've tried to show on this plan, uh, is, uh, we have the surrounding areas. What I, what we've done is kind of colored up the areas that are impacted by this project, so, uh, the gray being the new pavement areas, the tan is the new concrete areas, and of course, the green is, uh, new, uh, grass lawn areas or landscaping areas. So really what's happening here is we're adding this second lane. Got an island in between, um, this is a pretty standard layout, uh, you approach the drive-through lane, there's a sign that says any lane anytime, so, uh, the customer can go either in the inside lane or the outside lane. Um, and then there's a, uh, order point, uh, with a canopy at, uh, each lane, uh, that they pull to and, and place their order. Uh, the distance from the window, uh, back to the inside order point is eight feet, so there's, uh, more cars that can get in between there. But this, uh, side-by-side adds about four to five car capacity, if you will, uh, in the same amount of area. And then, uh, the current site is pretty narrow, uh, the drive lane, um, this particular driveway here, so what we're, what we're showing is pushing the curb line, uh, closer to the, uh, property line, the, the north property line, uh, to widen out that driveway to twenty-eight feet such that, um, you know, if cars were to stack beyond this, um, you know, it would be in a single lane, but then cars can still get out of the parking spots and still maneuver through the site. No building changes, um. The other change was, uh, so there's this existing thirty-foot wide access utility easement, um, so currently the dumpster is sitting back in here, uh, what we're proposing is a trucks dumpster enclosure, and then moving that out of this, uh, easement area. We still have adequate room to get the delivery truck around that area. Um, and we had to kind of position this such, originally, we were looking to have this rotated, uh, in, in either direction, but there's overhead, uh, wires here, so we had to pull this out so that it's, uh, not near the overhead wire, so when they, uh, service the dumpster, um, you know, there's not an issue there. So that's the onsite piece, the offsite piece, and I, uh, I know it wasn't us, or it wasn't me, but it was Bowler that, uh, talked about this uh, connection to Green Speedway previously. So we're showing a curb cut there, uh, the reason for that is in discussion with the owner operator, and I don't know if anybody's been to the site, but people are physically driving, um, down here, and they're driving over the curb, and there's a dirt path there now that, uh, has been created.
So for, for the, for the board's certification, uh, that's been brought to the town's attention, and Taco Bell has asked to put a barrier in there. And the highway superintendent said that's fine with him, because it's a mess.
Yeah.
Right, so.
And it almost looked like, I went out there tonight, and not only did it happen here, it almost looked like there was a spot back, uh, actually, it was right here, in the hotel, that someone's driven through the trees. So, uh, and, and we're just, you know, people are doing it, obviously, uh, my understanding is this site predated the meeting, the, the median being put in. Um, so obviously, access to the site, uh, you know, if you're heading north, you have to go up around the circle and come back, and I guess people just aren't willing to do that. So we're just trying to, uh, really accommodate the move. Whose obligation is to put the road in?
If they want a road, they could put the road in.
I guess I'm confused, so Rock will put the barrier up, is that, is that a temporary fix because of this, or?
Well, there's no barrier up, yeah.
There's, there's no barrier.
But you said.
Taco Bell wants to.
Taco Bell wants to.
Taco Bell wants to.
But a few years ago, they.
They requested, they requested the highway superintendent, would it be okay? And he said it's private property, so you can do whatever you want.
But I thought it was an easement and they were gonna put a road in when we approved the Taco Bell.
Well, here's the history, right? There is no Green Speedway.
Okay.
It does not exist. Um, there, the town, the town owns that property.
Understood.
Right, yeah, right, I mean, these guys know, I mean, the guys from Bowler know. Um, there is, I mean, we've talked about it, uh, when you, when you drill down to Taco Bell, there, I don't know what you would call it, Jamie, there's an access agreement.
Correct.
That Taco Bell has to, um, use the, the area there and maintain it.
Well, they, they built that to town specs as well.
Yes.
In anticipation that maybe they.
But it has not been dated to, it has not been dated to the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it'll just be a dead end.
Right.
Right.
Right, and that's just a nice entry into Taco Bell.
Right.
Quick, like, there's another road, there's a, well, a passageway here, right, I mean, this.
Yeah, yeah.
I kind of cut it off on the, we cut it off on the aerial, but.
Yeah, yeah.
They kind of.
Did you do the Taco Bell too?
I'm sorry?
Did you do the?
We, Bowler did, yes, yes.
I thought so, yeah. So was the yellow, um, top center?
This here?
Yeah.
That's, uh, just new, the, the parking gap, uh, because of the, uh, drive-through modifications, the parking got shifted along the front of the building, so it's a new concrete pad for the ADA spaces. Are they gonna get blocked by your own phone?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just jump right into the first thing that popped in my, what's our regulation on, on stacking on the, behind the, the menu board? How many we require?
Mark, Mark's on, Mark?
Did you, did you look at that, Derek?
I did, yeah.
I thought, I, I think it was six behind the menu board. And then I wanna say four between the menu board and the.
At eighty feet, you got the four from the menu board to the pickup window. But right now, I think we would interpret it, interpret stacking to be the same, if you have one menu board, you got six cars behind a menu board. If you have two menu boards, you got six cars behind both menu boards, not splitting between the two, because typically what happens is one menu board closes down and will, and then you are all back to six behind one, is that my, that's something.
I would, I would have gone the other way, but I would have gone three and three.
I, I get the three and three, I, I, that's where I'm at here, so this is, are we, are we saying three and three is okay, is okay, or do we?
So, so how many spaces are on the yellow brick road from the menu?
You mean, from, so these are, these, these are showing the first, these cars are sitting at the order point, so there's two, four, six, there's eight cars.
So you're stacking three.
So you're stacking four, plus you redid the parking to maybe put, so four, four, eight, plus say two in the parking lot, right?
Yeah, certainly could. And that's, and that's why we drive in, or, excuse me, widen out the, uh, drive-through lane.
I'm, I'm sorry, is it raining?
Yes.
Yeah, may, maybe you could explain, I mean, I, I've seen your presentation at other gatherings, maybe you could explain to the board how the interior works meshing with the exterior. Yeah, may maybe you could explain, I mean I I've seen your presentation at other gatherings, maybe you could explain to the board how the interior works meshing with the exterior?
You're you're talking about the drive-through operation?
Yeah.
Um yeah, so uh when they're taking orders, uh there's uh they they uh what they call actually park orders, so you know if there's, this person pulls up, basically these people pull up at the same time, and typically it's one person taking orders, so they take this person's order, they park it in the system, and there's actually a, there's a line on the pavement. Um and they call that uh, it's kind of the merge point, but they use that, so when that, whatever car crosses that line, that's order, we'll just use order one. The next car is order two, there's actually, sometimes what they'll do is on the monitor inside, there's actually this, the same line is is kind of like taped on the screen, if you will. So they, so they stage, that's how they stage the orders, it it really works, they've done this for uh a decade, uh we, you know, they've been doing this, um so operationally, you know, it works very well. And it just, um you know generally, it just allows them a little more uh efficiency and a little more capacity. And then the distance, so generally speaking, they they will, from the the cash window, which is where you pay, back to the menu board, it's either sixty feet, eighty feet, or a hundred, a hundred feet is optimal. Because that gives them just a little more time, they they take the order, the order's in the system, it's cooking, so that, you know, in the perfect world, you're pulling up and you pay your cash and then you move forward and your food is uh you know ready at that point. Or or the the owner-operators are not crazy about sixty feet, because it just doesn't give them enough time. So we're always striving for uh a hundred, but in this situation, just because of the configuration, you can imagine if we went to a hundred, but we just pushed the stacking back even farther, so the the happy medium on this uh layout was eighty feet.
So um this question, and we can certainly talk to Alana about it, it's, she's she's the one who's gonna make the interpretation, right, on what our code is. And this is not something that's come up, it to us yet, this is actually, this is actually the first time we've seen a double drive-through, and so we have the code that talks about the cars, so.
Chick-fil-A does.
Chick-fil-A. And and what we.
Yeah, I was gonna say chick.
Then you then.
I know, it's not.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah, but they had.
Not, oh yeah, but it's.
Right.
I mean here's the fact, I can see how many cars we stacked in each of the lanes before we were behind, was only behind the parking space, that's that's.
Chick-fil-A, forty-five is everything.
Yeah, so I I I think they might, they might have six behind each of the line, each of the lines before they get in the parking lot, so I don't know.
Well, and they do, there's a level of real estate too on that layout.
Yeah, I mean, and and we do, we work for both.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
There's there's a, I don't wanna say it's a different operation, because they're both quickserves, but their drive-throughs are certainly laid out differently in that they separate their drive-through traffic really from the apartment, but they're more isolated, if you will, than what a typical McDonald's restaurant.
I think, is it the magic number, the shit, the code?
Yeah, it's it's interpreting what the stacking really is for a double situation, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Logically, you would, I think maybe you said it, it, or maybe it was you, that it doesn't need to be six each, because you're adding capacity.
Yeah, you might answer my question, because what I've always been afraid of is when I'm in some other places where they have doubles, double lanes, and there's two entertainers, and G off shift, they open, we're short staffed, so one's always closed. And so then then no matter what, you're back to one lane and they shorten the stack, and they only use one lane, lane eighty percent of the time, so they stack in the parking lot.
If you've got, if you've got one operator in the, how you, how it functions, if it's running both, then it's the same as everyone, if you just one operator, it's a different situation, is that?
But then.
Well, it's a favor, but you only have one, the two lanes, and yet it's busy all the time. And you come through and you merge into one, and it goes fast.
Goes fast, yeah, and so.
It really goes fast.
Yeah. I think this is this goes to operation as to as to kind of, or what we think about this, so.
That that's correct. I I I live in Rochester, so I don't frequent this one a lot, but it's really driven by how they operate, and they will, I mean depending on the volume, later in the night, they may put a cone out there, uh you know, enclose the outside lane and just use the inside. But I don't see that a lot.
It's not staffed, it's me I'm getting to the staff, I mean after the staff inside, right, but it's it's the way part two.
Right, right.
And when they are.
But if the code is, you got their sets.
Right.
But it makes it a a good case for it, listen McDonald's, as great as this is, and it's.
I I guess, just comment, I mean, if the goal is to have six spaces behind the menu, if you had two of them and they each had three, that's your six, otherwise you're kind of assuming a double throughput.
Correct.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
So you already have a single drive-through today, right?
That's right.
So same thing.
It's.
So Alana has to make her interpretation for this.
We're adding five cars.
Yeah, we're always working capacity, solving a problem that already, that might already exist to a better order.
On that right side.
Right, to the, to the menu board.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Is everyone at the same menu board?
No, there's two, two, two order points, two menu boards.
So we would have to look at it. It's two, two menu boards, and then you go down to one window.
Yeah.
Two menu boards.
Two menu boards, so it's.
It's what they, it's what they refer to as a two-two-one, meaning there's two lanes entering, there's two order points, and then you merge down to one lane.
To the one lane, and then you fade out, and then you go to the next window, and you pick it up.
It's how you have one order point and one serving point.
Yes.
It's all fast.
So right, right now, their current condition is, if you look down, look at it right now, if you count the car at the order board, one, two, three, you get four in, total of four cars, before you're backing into somebody's trying to drive out, so you're going from four to eight.
Right, plus there's shift in the parking lot.
Yeah.
To even handle the more of a back-through, I just prefer not to have a back-through into the ADA spots, right?
There's overflow capacity there.
You're adding about six spots relative to what you have today.
Yeah, and technically there's spot for, there's really one spot for a car, you know, if the, if these cars were lined up, there's a spot for one more car in front of that car. So or else, or adding, I mean, in total, adding five.
Does the, does the sweep of the outside drive-through, is it encroaching any further than the previous into the drive lane? I I have a really hard time reading the plan.
Don't think it's, no, actually it doesn't, because that lane, um if you wanna go to the plan, um I can just show that, uh it's, because the the existing drive-through through lane is further from the building than how we modified these two, so it doesn't really encro, I don't know the, if if it's exact, but it's it's very comparable. Um yeah, actually, if you go back to that, yeah, that plan right here, so this is the existing drive-through lane, uh which is similar in location to, actually, matter of fact, when they did the MRP project, they put in new concrete and new uh order point, this is the existing concrete of that drive-through lane, so we're matching into that. So it's almost on top of each other, so we're basically putting the, keeping this lane and putting the lane inside of it.
All right, we got it. Um yeah, so let's, um, the other thing I can think of it right now is the, how has the parking count changed from what you have now, which is under variance now?
Yeah, I don't know the history, but uh there.
And how's it changing from Dow to this new iteration, are we losing spots, or is it?
Yes, we are, did this, did you research that, Derek? Uh I did, I don't have it right here, but but there there's fifty-two spaces today, and we're going down to thirty-one.
And I believe about seventy-five are required.
Seventy, yeah, I think I had seventy-six is was the number. Now, uh you know, probably like most quickserves, but speaking from, speaking for McDonald's, it's seventy-plus percent of their business is drive-through. Like I was there tonight, there was four cars in the parking lot, one of them was mine.
So if it comes down to SaaS, because those, it has to go to ZBA for ZBA action, just because of that, but it's.
Yeah, that's, and we anticipated that.
So we'd have to make a recommendation on that.
Have you, um, you haven't made application?
No, we have not.
If your number of parking spaces goes down that substantially, do you change anything on the interior, like less tables or anything like that?
No, I mean, there's no proposed changes to the inside of the building. And I've I've done uh McDonald's projects for uh twenty-five plus years, you know, it used to be forty-five to fifty, and then it was you know, forty to forty-five, and now we're doing new sites that are thirty to forty, I mean, it's just depends on the site, but you know, the the number is certainly coming down what they realistically need. And you know, and we're trying not to overpark sites when we're doing new sites.
Let's order King on the Boulevard, they had to get a variance, right, because they have.
Way less, way less, yeah, and yeah, seriously, a lot of that was there. So that's gonna, you have to make a rec, you have to make applications, we can't make a recommendation until there's an application.
Okay, understood.
And then you could have, as part of that, you should have some supporting, some type of, write-up as to what your true usage of the lots are, and any documentation on that, or what, you know, that you only, there's one for a car in the lot, everything. Uh to support yourself. So we can look at that. And then I guess, I think we have to get our heads right, I'm I'm with Kevin, and I think in the perception of two lanes is better than one, so therefore we're only being an issue with the stacking. How does that fall on, and with, what does the letter of our zoning say, is that becoming a, an item in the in the variance request, I'm trying to figure out what.
I was gonna say, so we we almost need that interpretation before we make our application.
Yeah.
I'd like to look at the code before doing that.
Oh, I was, oh, we're not asking you to do it, we're just.
It's like now, come on, it's only back o'clock, I already got two hours.
And that's why we didn't submit, and that's, I mean, that's why we didn't submit to ZBA, we wanted to present this first and figure out uh some things here. So it's, I don't know if there's any other questions on the drive-through piece of it, I know, I I guess I'd just like to maybe go back to the connection, I know you mentioned, I I don't know if that, the the barrier thing with Taco Bell was a given, that that, I guess my question would be, how much are they gonna barrier, and are people gonna find another?
And they're driving through?
Oh, yes, I actually have a picture, I wish I could put the picture in there, but I took a picture of it, there's a dirt, and it's not, um, it's not here, it's it's angled off, and there's, I mean, it's right down to the dirt, and there's holes, you know, I'll call them potholes.
There's like, you have a curb line?
They're driving into the site or out of the site?
My guess is they're driving into the site, that they're coming from the light and turning left, right, because they don't wanna go up around the circle, so they're, they're entering the light down by Taco Bell, tipping the left and coming up.
And driving in.
Yeah, and driving over the curb.
Otherwise, you know, round, I see, but I see the operation, yeah.
Listen, I have an idea.
So I would just park at Taco, and walk.
I have an idea, if you guys put in their road to road specs, and that parts already to road specs, I think the town will take it, of the application.
Can we do a, I mean, aerial, an aerial, possibly, that's what I was. Cause I'm the board.
Yeah, why don't we just, I know the town, they go, put in the town spec, and the town takes it, and.
But it does look like though, that the drive lane coming out of McDonald's, so is that not lining up with Green Speedway?
Uh the the rear drive lane, and we can look at that.
No, but it you could, you could do a, it could do a little.
Then it's gonna be, I mean, it's, yeah, they're not.
One, and that's a a one-way out, like it's a one-way circulation.
Right.
Yeah, out of where?
Out of McDonald's.
Yeah, but then there's a light right near it.
Right, so they have to turn right, then turn in a left, a left.
But if.
Or unless we're not, I'm talking about the, uh let's get to the aerial, and then we can.
Cause that isn't, does that mean you're turning it into a one-way out of McDonald's, cause right now it's two-way?
No, I I thought you were talking about the um.
The Speedway.
Yeah, that the rear drive on McDonald's lining up with Green Speedway.
Yeah, that that's where it started.
Yeah, so but that rear drive coming out of McDonald's is one direction, it's like one way, it's only a right in and right out.
It's one way, it's one way.
It's a right there, but when you, but when you think it right out.
So if you came to Greenway, if Greenway was in place, you'd cover the Greenway, you'd take it right onto the, the two-way drive, and then you go left in, and you're there.
Right, then you could go a lot.
But if you don't use, so you come out of the bus stop.
County is supposed to use the muddy.
It's right out.
Do a lot of Green Speedway. It's actually Taco Bell brought in its worst part, and then.
Well, that's what I'm, that's the piece I'm confused on when you're referencing that.
And this is, this is where they're coming, so you go, you come to. Okay, so you come out, you're gonna only go around to.
Oh, at the traffic?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But then there's a light here. You're gonna go.
It's three hundred and fifty feet of.
Oh, that doesn't have that much.
It's the most technical.
I think if you go to Google, absolutely.
I've got, I've got. All right, we gotta uh, we gotta move on.
Is there anything else we're gonna ask the board on the site, or is it now, we can just look at the code?
Yeah, I think you gotta go to the aerial, because I don't think the, oh, actually that'll work, okay.
Stacking, parking count?
Yeah, so they're driving over, you know, because.
About it here somewhere, I think is what it is.
It's kinda hard to tell on this.
I don't know where Green Speedway is.
Yeah, this, I think if you go, can you go to the.
It's it's hard to tell ratings, this is an old photo.
Yeah, but I think it's up, I thought it was updated in there.
Just go to the aerial, just go to the, yeah, the aerial, I can see it right there, it's right off, yeah.
Not this, yeah. If you just hit uh the back, or if it's, yeah, now hit the aerial.
Now the layers, the layers, yeah.
I've got some really nasty photos.
Yeah, there it is, so you can, so they're doing, it's like this, they're angling off here, and then.
I think even more than that, see where the spaces, the.
Oh, yeah, maybe that, okay, you're right there.
Yeah, that's where it's raining, yeah.
So you said Taco Bell, we can zoom out a little bit?
Zoom out a little, they built the the entry road down there to town spec.
The, up to here?
No, no, right to there.
Oh, right to here, I got you, okay.
So the rest is the old parking lot, so.
But this is owned by the town, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So is it, the board's position, the only way to do that is if the road was rebuilt to town, or built to town's part?
Correct.
Okay. Would be, would they be opposed to that?
Yeah, cause you can't egress out onto that road, it's not a legal road, so it has to be, it has to be.
No, right, it's right, it's it's all or nothing, I mean, it's nothing, then you gotta put a bar, you know, you build a barricade way.
Okay.
What's your email, I mean, I I've got this designed already.
R uh B E B.
That would be helpful, yeah.
What is it, R?
R B E B?
B E B.
O U T.
I got you.
Okay. So, yeah, it's just.
I'll, I'll, I'll send you a copy, that's what I do, I think it's, I think it's a D.
Okay.
It's probably.
Order magnitude?
Yeah, it'll be an order of magnitude.
Okay, I was asking, what is the order of magnitude?
Uh this is, this is old.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Yeah, it was half a million dollars in twenty sixteen.
Yeah, I don't think uh we're gonna find justification for that.
I'll send it to you, right?
Okay.
You want it?
Yeah, no, I do, well, you can share that.
Well, I, we could come back and ask the town to do some type of shared arrangement, because your town gets a great benefit out of it too, getting access to that properties.
Oh, we could get the town, we could get the hotel, uh all of a sudden it looks a little bit better for everybody. It, yeah, see, I mean, it's it's being done, I guess, I mean, yeah, I guess you could barricade it, but I don't know, people are crazy these days, they're probably gonna find a way.
Well, they're doing, their eyes are down looking at their phones, so they can't see anything, any of the question.
All right, so we will uh, we'll get clarification on the interpretation, and then we'll make application, then we have to come back here again before ZBA, is that correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, and there'll, and there'll be a time, because.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate the board's time, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Waylock.
Good evening.
We need to back up a little screen.
Yes.
Let me know when you're all set, and I can just give you a brief presentation of what we're here for tonight.
Yeah, we're all set, and then real quick, have you made your ZBA application yet?
It is, I'm actually waiting for the application fee, which is being overnighted to me, I've been asking for it for two weeks from the owner. Um I'm gonna have it tomorrow, the uh the ZBA application will be overnighted to the town for the deadline on Monday. I have a stack of papers here ready to go.
Great.
Uh, but we're here uh this evening to uh to hopefully uh obtain a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals um for an area variance for proposed addition at um at Waylock Drive uh for the Pizza Hut, uh we were here about, we were here a month ago, um we also met with the the um workshop meeting uh subsequent to that meeting to discuss some of the. Um, we also, uh, met with the, the, um, workshop meeting, uh, subsequent to that meeting to discuss, uh, some of the architectural elevations. Um, if you'd like, I can go over that and go over some of the landscaping and the relocation of the transformer, or if you would just wanna, I know it's been a long night. If you just wanna go through and, uh, make the recommendation and handle that at the next meeting, but I've, I've got everything ready to, to go over that information with you as well.
What, what, here, here's my, here's my issue about the recommendation, and I, I, it's not that I, I wanna put you off. We have, we do have one more meeting for a ZBA. I'd like to see the exact application, so that we know exactly what's being recommended. But as, as an overview, if you wanna pull up those signs, I, I think you've gotten the gist of it.
Right, I, the, the application, um, and I can, I'll share my screen with the building elevation, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the, the, we've discussed it, um, at the meeting, um, and actually I think I even have a, a newer, uh, hang on one second, I think I even have a newer, uh, one that represents the, um, that took off, uh, Cola Lane. Um, but the, um, basically what we're proposing is, or, I'm sorry, Hut Lane, the Hut Lane, um, that's gonna be removed. Um, and it'll be these, uh, one, two, three, four signs, uh, located here, and the signs, um, this sign, we believe um, had a variance as part of the original Jimmy John's, and we have requested, um, and I, I think the board at the workshop meeting thought that they would be able to get us the exact sign in, the size of those signs. We're not gonna increase the size of those signs in any way, if anything, um, talking to the architect, he's almost certain that what he has proposed right now is smaller than the, smaller than the signs. Um, but, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna, in, in keeping, we're going to make sure that those signs are, um, meeting the, uh, the, um.
Previous variance.
Here, I've got, uh, the, uh.
Yes, I, I think we can cut right to the end of this and just say, if that's, if that's good, we'll be good. There needs to be a chart that shows each original sign per variance by size and location, by elevation, and then the corresponding new sign that says that, shows that is the, the same size or smaller.
Well, well, a little more complicated like than that. Eric dug back in our files, like, to the beginning of time.
Yep.
There you go.
We can't find any area variances for the signs that are on the building. The only area variance for a sign that we were able to find was the monument sign, which was done as part of like the whole office park when it was subdivided. So, we, we're not sure how those signs were approved, but we don't have any record of there being variances for them. So, for the department, for the code, um, what is allowed is a hundred and twenty square feet on the side of the building facing the road with the frontage, which I think would be that, can't remember what direction it is, but that's the top right one, I think, is the face according to how we're interpreting it, you know, looking at where the access is.
It'll be the top left.
Yes.
Top left one, yeah.
So that's the current code, so anything other than that would require a variance, we think.
I think it's for the building purpose, yeah.
You can find it in sixty months.
Well, it, I mean, it, it, we did find the, the signs, they were, they were approved, but we're not really sure why.
Or how.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but they were approved some, you know, decade ago or so, um.
So could they go to the ZBA to formalize that as the variance?
Absolutely, absolutely, that's what.
Yeah, so, and so our recommendation is then formalizing the listed variance based upon this, and we can use the data of the current sign for the basis of what we need to work with for the new signs. Right?
Right, so, right, so it, I think William was, he was on the, he was on the right path of what, of what you need to do, just, um, yes, but.
Summarize it.
Right, summarize it. The board seems inclined to recommend, um, the four signs in the basic sizes that they're looking at, so you need to let us know the sizes.
And what you'd be able to recommend is, on a document, looking at.
Document, document.
Right now the document shows the Hut, Hut Lane thing, which, so that's, and not a good.
Right, yeah, I, I just put up on the screen, he sent me one with the Hut Lane, I think you should be looking at an elevation with that removed.
Yeah, gotcha, yeah. Yeah.
And then the measurement around the sign, and like the, the, the whole, not just the words?
But the Pizza Hut, like, the Pizza Hut, the bottom one is include the, the, the roof.
Or the act, or whatever that is.
That's their roof.
Yeah, the roof, okay. Um, the, the, the good news is I can probably incorporate all of this into the variance application, that'll be overnighted tomorrow night, it'll be, uh,
Perfect, correct.
Perfect.
Quick do for tomorrow, but, um, I, I can certainly do that, um, which is, which is good news, um, and so, we'll just need to, so the one on the top left here is the only one that's permitted by code, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
So the other three signs would, would require variances.
This is the right, the one that's facing the road.
Facing, oh, facing?
Facing the road, where the road.
Oh, not, not the main road, but the little side road, the bad side.
Where their access is.
Gotcha, okay.
This is the one facing the
Yeah, that's.
Access, yes.
Yep, that's the one that's the legal sign, yes.
That's the legal sign, the other, even though the road wraps around the other two sides of the building, it's not permitted.
Correct, cause that's the one where you drive entries on it.
Okay. Okay, so I will incorporate all of that into the variance application and get that, um, you know, overnighted tomorrow. Um, if for whatever reason something comes up and I can't get it overnighted, we'll hand-deliver it on Monday.
And indicate, uh, it indicate that that's the primary allowed.
So this is the primary allowed sign?
Yep.
Okay. We can do that. Um, and, and as you could see by this, the, these architectural elevations, um, they incorporated, uh, some of the comments with matching the roof lines, uh, from the last meeting. Um, I wanted to bring that up, um, to try to give it the, that double tower appearance. And it, one other thing I wanted to, uh, bring up, uh, is we talked during the workshop meeting about the landscaping and the location of the transformer. Um, at the time, I, looking at Google Earth, I thought that that transformer was well landscaped under the current condition. However, after going out there shortly after our workshop meeting, I realized that all that landscaping had been removed, um, the, the evergreen trees, everything, and I'll show you a picture of, uh, what it, what it looks like under the current, uh, this is what it looks like under the current state, that, the existing transformer that we're going to be putting the new.
It's a little different, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a lot different, so, but, in, in keeping of what I said, um, we've put together a very aggressive, uh, landscaping plan to try to recapture what was there before. Um, I don't know why it was, was taken out, um, but I will, uh, pull up the, uh, landscaping plan. Uh, let's see here. So what, what we're proposing, um, this is that existing electrical box with the, um, burning bushes, uh, about sixteen of them, uh, planted around it, probably two or three gallon, not very big ones, um, but what we would do in relocating this existing transformer, um, to this location um, is continue that line in that mulch bed, um, with those burning bushes, and then maybe some larger spirea off of the end here. Um, and then flank all of that with, um, four, uh, five to, let me see what I specified here, I think six to eight foot tall, um, Norway spruce trees to try to, try to recapture what was there before. Um, yeah, uh, six to eight foot tall, um, Norway spruces.
How tall is the equipment?
Uh, the equipment is probably four to five feet tall. Uh, well, the, they, this one is four feet tall, I think this one's maybe, the new one that's going in is maybe four and a half feet tall.
Brett, do you have any other photos you took out there? Cause when I drove by there, there's a lot of landscaping that actually hides the building.
Um, let me see what other photos, I didn't take a lot when I was out there. Um, let me see what I've got.
It's almost like the building's in the woods, when you come down Waylock.
Yeah.
You can't even see the building.
Yeah, um.
Probably why they get rid of that.
Yeah.
That's probably why they cut it down. Um, you know, I, I don't really have many good photos coming down Waylock. Uh.
I think the problem you have with this site, if you, if you drill down, right, the access to the building is far away from where the building actually is.
Yeah.
So you can see the building from the roads, but when you come down Waylock, there, there's no.
No way.
There's no, um, what do I wanna say? There's no curb appeal, cause it sits back and down and over.
Yes, it does.
Right, and, and there are a bunch of trees, like up there where you come in, so you actually don't even see it coming down the road. That's probably the problem, that's probably why it's flipped three or four times.
Yeah, cause you gotta, it's actually, entries actually feels like in front of the other building.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it kinda sits in behind the, um, sits in behind the, uh, the, the hotel there.
Yeah, and then when Eric and I looked at the signs, it was the same thing with the signs, right? You know, Lon and Eric and I looked at the signs, and it's like, you know, the, the real sign doesn't really do it justice, because you need a sign when you come in and park, right? You need, you need some type of curb appeal and.
Yeah, if you're looking at it and I, I'll, um.
It's just a weird site.
Yeah, it, it is, it is an odd site, and, um, uh, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's almost like it's got three front yards.
Yeah.
Yeah, so driving down Waylock, this is, this is essentially what you're seeing. Now this landscaping you see here is.
See how it's all hidden behind the trees?
Yeah.
So you're going in just off the screen, so you don't even see the restaurant.
And you typically drive by, you have to come back, and then you go, how do I get back there?
See, there's the entrance.
Yep.
You drive way down and back to, to get to it.
Yeah, I would agree.
Right? So there's a ton of landscaping there, it's just not around the transformer.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the last image captured that we had was June of twenty-three of last year, showed all the trees, and so they came down in the last.
Yeah, so if you're, this is from, yeah, June of twenty-three, you can see looking at that, that's what it looked like then.
Yep.
And you got, th- this tree still remains, and then all of this, the, the Norway spruces, and it looks like there's some deciduous, uh, shrubs in there as well, um, have been removed.
This is the, I mean, if you had that, well done, at the right scale. And you'll get visibility in our screen.
Would you prefer maybe, and, you know, it'd be benefit to the client, obviously, to go with maybe a evergreen screening that's maybe of a slightly smaller scale, some sort of, uh, dwarf, uh, juniper or something like that, that'll get five, six feet tall?
Yeah, as dense as we can get it at the ground plane to hide the gear, cause right now we're setting gear in the front, right in the front yard, which is usually something we're, we frown on, but it's already there and we're, you know, it, it's a the option of, of where, where the gear was gonna go before is out on that terrace, which requires an architectural solution, which isn't a great idea there. Anyway, so, we're back to here, so, anything dense that we can do there is gonna be a better solution.
Yeah, I'll, uh.
I don't mind, I can see the property from the road, it's, we want, we wanna keep somebody in there at the same time.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at some, um, you know, probably some dwarf cypress or dwarf junipers that, that don't get much higher than six, seven feet tall and get them on a, on a pretty tight grid, that'll grow together and create a screen through there.
Yep.
And that can also be trimmed down as necessary and still survive, unlike these Norway spruces.
Take cuttings off of my burning bushes and growing weeds.
Yeah, we can do that, we'll, we'll, I'll amend the landscaping plan for that.
Okay, great. We have any other issues with this now, that's the primary?
Yeah, that's it.
I think that's it, Brett, we're.
Okay, so, uh.
Heather, we can, we can move forward.
So until we get that other application and modify the application for the signs, will, uh, you're gonna hold off on making the recommendation to the ZBA?
Yeah, that way we can react to, to, point by point, so it's coordinated.
Okay. All right, sounds good. I appreciate your time this, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I said, thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate your time this evening, thanks so much.
All right, Brett.
All right, thank you, bye.
All right, last but not least. That's landing, finally here.
Denied.
Be nice, just so you know, we need majority plus one, which means we need a positive vote from everybody here.
I wasn't gonna tell you, I did the approvals for the Starbucks one. And I think it was all front yards and that was why, you know, probably wasn't a.
You can interpret it as all front yards, yeah, that's, uh.
I mean, it's just a really squirrely site.
See, we looked at that.
I mean, it's up on that board, it's a design award.
I know, it's a great, it's a great little structure. Sighted knives and a great little city business. I don't like that one, huh?
So, I, I think, first of all, I appreciate you getting us into this, being independent of the site approval. I think this application for subdivision approval was due back in February. Um, at one point Jamie had some questions, why it was a fourth amendment. I did go back and look at the subdivision history, which was that last one.
I don't care anymore.
Jamie, you're surrendering too early.
So this is a, a history of what the subdivision recorded maps and the years that they were recorded. The original was created the corner lot seventy-nine fifty-eight, nineteen ninety-four. Actually, the map was dated by the surveyor in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, the second amendment created eighty-six sixty, uh, ninety-one fifty was two thousand and one, two thousand and eight, which is the municipal utility building, is two thousand and eight. Um, so that leaves the lots that, inside the loop in the three residential lots, which Witlanding LLC has now acquired all three of those, uh, that, what remains is in total about twenty-two point seven seven acres of land. Three residential houses are pushed pretty tight up against Fly Road, um, you know, they're all zoned high-tech, they um, in and of themselves, I don't think could be conforming lots in the high-tech zone. Um, so, our subdivision application is to take those three lots, which total around two and a half acres and, you know, add them and merge them into the new lot number one thousand. So, um, that would be the property that we would, um, propose to develop. We can site plan, plan approval for TTM. My thought process is, you know, we hope TTM goes forward, I know we've got some challenges. Uh, but independent of TTM, we should merge these lots as, as one owner, and so. I know we discussed, um, some sort of security to guarantee that the buildings were, would come down in some durations from both subdivision approval and site plan approval, in which that would happen. We've already awarded the abatement contract that, the buildings will be posted probably on Monday. Um, all three of them have asbestos in them, we have disconnects into national grid for, uh, gas and electric, uh, there's some concern about whether they're on septic or sewer. Um, trying to figure that out, but we expect we submit demolition permits in a couple of weeks, so. We, we take the houses down independent of whatever happens with TTM.
Well, that conports with what we were told, what we've been told, so.
Is there any, you want some?
I don't think so, I mean, there's, the secret was done, um, so, you know, we hear you about, um, oh, and then the utility easement, um, they would have to be removed at site plan if that's, if this goes forward, basically.
Sure, yeah, I mean, we'll leave it for now, yeah, so. Um, and, and I, I will be on for three mile review, I think in, uh, maybe six, three, so.
All right, so I, I propose a motion, I'll read and go from there.
Okay.
Uh, this is a motion to approve the subdivision plan dated November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, entitled Final Plan to Witlanding Fourth Amendment with the following finding and conditions. Finances, the Witlanding LLC subdivision is requested to combine four tax.
with the following finding and conditions, finance, the Wett Landing LLC subdivision is requested to combine four tax parcels, thirty-seven ten oh one point one, thirty-seven ten oh two point one, thirty-seven ten oh three point one, and thirty-seven ten oh four point one into one new lot for a total of twenty-two point seven seven six acres in order to facilitate, facilitate the construction of a high-tech manufacturing and office facility. This is a simple division of land under the code as no new lots are created, this involves removal of lot lines to create a single lot. Site plan for the high-tech manufacturing facility proposed for this combined lot is pending. However, this application for the lot line adjustment subdivision is now bifurcated from that action as it is a finding of this board that the lot line adjustment can stand on its own as being a reasonable configuration of the land whether or not the site plan is approved. Removal of the lot lines will facilitate the removal of non-conforming residential uses in this high-tech zoning district with implementation of the conditions of this approval. While this is a simple subdivision of land and the code allows a waiver of the public hearing requirement, a public hearing was held for this subdivision simultaneously with the public hearing for seeker and site plan held on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four and closed on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. There was no adverse public interest in this subdivision. This board has received the Onondah County Planning Board Resolution of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, which requests three modifications, which include matters related to the Onondaga County Department of Transportation SWIP matters. This board does not adopt these modifications, but a majority plus one vote inasmuch as this is a paper lot line adjustment that will not affect the matters raised in the modifications. Those requested modifications are also part of the Onondaga County Planning Board referral on the site plan and the matters will be appropriately addressed for that action. This board made full seeker findings and decision on site plan and subdivision and issued a negative seeker declaration for, for the project, finding no significant adverse environmental impacts. The April ninth, twenty twenty-four seeker finding statement is incorporated by reference herein. Filing conditions, applicant must file the subdivision map at the Onondaga County Court's office in accordance with the rules of Onondaga County and provide a copy of the stamped filed map with the town of the Wett Department of Planning and Zoning. Should the map not be filed before site plan approval is given by the planning board on this combined lot, the filing of the subdivision map will be a condition of site plan approval. There is a utility easement on the subdivision map which runs through the center of the lot inside Hammersmith Drive. This easement is not a written easement filed with the Onondaga County Court's office, but is shown on the previously filed subdivision map of this property. Accordingly, the town board must release the easement prior to construction of any improvements per future site plan approval. The three houses currently located on the re-subdivided site must be demolished and removed from the site earlier of one, sixty days after site plan approval is granted by the planning board on the, on the pending Wett Landing project, or two, a hundred and eighty days after subdivision approval is granted by the planning board. This board accepts the security amount proposed by the town engineer and therefore applicant must submit a cash security escrow in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to town to assure fulfillment of this condition. If the structure removal is not completed by the date set forth herein, the town may, but is not obligated to use such amounts of the security and as are necessary for removal of the structures. No further notice will be required from the town to the owner to effectuate the removal completed herein.
Contemplated. Contemplated.
Contemplated.
Contemplated.
Contemplated.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
I don't know if this would change anything, but it looks like they have met the, um, the county planning board requirements.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Yeah, we have the letter from Ofta and, um, correspondence with WEP about the SWIP, so.
For on the subdivision?
Well, the county just kinda does it all as.
I, I know, that's the weird thing is.
Yeah, I mean, so we'd be looking at it more site plan, but I mean, these have been dealt with. So I don't know if that changes how we get to vote it on, I just wanted to mention that.
There were two resolutions, a one for site plan, they were essentially.
Yeah, so they were, they were, it was two actions, but the way the county planning board, like, we would just review it kind of as one big thing and put them in.
Right, but, but it's really about the SWIP and all of that is related to the site plan.
I agree, I'm just saying they have met these requirements, so I didn't know if it actually would require a majority plus one, not that.
Yeah, that's, that's the only.
That's why, you know, I didn't know if it should be.
It's a technicality, it shows the majority plus one, so.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that, I don't understand.
If we were doing these simultaneously, you wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
But I think because this might not, well, like, we're, we're doing this if it might not happen to Wett, um, the, the TTM project, so um, they're not gonna do their SWIP and stuff on a blank piece of paper, right?
Right, no, I'm, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to mention that we're sure that the town can handle it, but I just wanted to mention that they have met those
On a blank subdivision. No, thank you, that's, that's really good, no, no.
Those modifications.
That's good to know. Thank you.
So we have it up.
I'll second.
Doug's first, Kevin second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're unanimous, so we're majority plus one. Like, well, so, we're approved.
Thank you.
You?
Question, Joe, Joe. That's tradition. You're holding the longest one now.
I know. Gavin, Kathy seconds, all in favor.
Approved.
Nancy. Majority, what?
What are the, uh, what are the standard challenges?
So what is it?